I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll read the, uh, the school meeting is the first meeting today followed afterwards by the town meeting. Okay, just as soon as I, uh, okay. Oh, is this through the warning? Okay, sure, okay. I'm going to read the town warning and then I'm gonna immediately follow that with the school warning and then we'll proceed from there. The legal voters of the town of Jamaica in the county of Wyndham and state of Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at 10:00 a.m. at the town hall in said town of Jamaica on the first Tuesday in March, March 1st, 2016 to transact the following business and act upon the following articles. Now I'll read the school warning. The legal voters of the town's school district of Jamaica, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at the town hall in Jamaica on Tuesday, March 1st, 2016 at 10:00 a.m. to act upon the following articles. And article number one is to elect a moderator for a term of one year. What is your pleasure for moderator? I am not a candidate. I am not a candidate. Greg Jolly has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare nominations closed. All those in favor of Greg Jolly serving as your moderator for one year, please say aye. And opposed, no. Thank you. Congratulations, Greg. Thank you very much. I'm gonna pass him the ceremonial gavel and a copy of Robert's Rules. If he can wade through Robert's Rules, he's gonna do a lot better than I ever did. Congratulations, Greg. You've been around for 38 years as town moderator. And I think I'll leave the book uncracked like, well, but I'll keep the gavel. All right, what I'm gonna do is change up things a little bit. I'm gonna come down there and we'll discuss how we're gonna move forward. All right, uh, for some business up first, number one, the primaries are going on and there's also the bond issue for the town garage which is being voted on. And if, you'll see back there, that's where the voting is. You can go through the process and deposit your ballots over to the side here. So keep that in mind. Polls are open until 7:00. I'd like to introduce Pam Tweedy, town clerk. She and I are new to running the town meeting, so be gentle with us. I know many, many of you by face after 26 years in town and vast majority of you, I don't know your name, which is one of the beauties of being in a small town. So when motions are made, when seconds are made, please just state your name when you make the motion, just so that Pam and I can have the correct information for the town records. All right. Certain that I've forgotten something. We'll begin with the article two of the school district meeting. And this is to elect all Jamaica school director, uh, direct district officers as required by law. This is the school board over here on this side of the stage, so they'll be addressing the issues that come up as we go forward. So, the first one is for school district treasurer, one-year term. I've never heard of this one before. A town treasurer, very good. So presently, the town treasurer is the school district treasurer. Do I have a motion?
I don't know if I'm allowed to make a request after you've asked for a motion, but if we could somehow figure out how to do that and a town meeting at the same time because I haven't read this article yet and I'm having a tachypnea.
Okay, well, it's good that primary voters are moving forward and are active, but we need to be cognizant that there is a meeting going on here, so please, I will try to project my voice as strongly as possible. No, I do not. And there are seats up front. So, I will entertain a motion for the school district treasurer for one year.
Along those lines, I'd like to ask that anybody that's sitting on the board over there, come to the front of them. If they don't wanna come down here, or at least they come to the front with everybody in the back. It's really good for health.
Is that agreeable to all here? Okay, so, the governance cannot hear the people and the people cannot hear the governance. So, the request was anytime any of you on the stage wish to address or answer a question, that you come forward on the stage to be able, so people can hear you because this does absorb all the sound. Okay, we have another technical problem, which is that Terry's position is an appointed position. So. We could strike the article, we could table the article. Okay, so, there's been a motion to strike the article to table it.
Strike that line from here.
Strike that line, okay. Second? Ed Dordeduke, second it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, so done. We move on to the school district director, a two-year term. And presently, that two-year term has been held by Tom Colman. What is the group's pleasure? I will entertain a motion.
Dana West nominates Tom Colman for the position.
His name is declined, nomination. Are there any other nominations? Two-year position? This is the first group that I've done moderating in front of. When I ask a question, you don't look down at your laps. This is really different. I like this. Are there any nominations?
I would nominate Jennifer Dordeduke.
Okay, she, Jennifer Dordeduke has been nominated. She has accepted the nomination. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare that nominations are closed. And does the body agree that Jennifer Dordeduke will serve as a two-year term on your school board? All in favor? Opposed? One negative vote, any extensions? Very good. Your two-year school board member is Jennifer Dordeduke. Moving on, we're going to go now to the school district director, the three-year term. And that has been presently held by Heather Hollenbeck. Very good. I have the floor open for nominations. Anyone who wish to make a nomination for this position for three years?
I would nominate Pam Tweedy.
Pam Tweedy has been nominated. She has accepted. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare nominations closed. All in favor of Pam Tweedy filling the three-year position for the school director, please say aye. No? Abstentions? Congratulations, Pam. Hi, before you move on, I think we should recognize Tom and Heather for their service. Indeed. We'd like to thank town moderators for their two-year term. Having been on the school board when Act 60 came in, I have a dinkling of what you've been through. Well, let's move on to the Leland and Gray school district director. And this is a term of three years. I forget who is presently. Pardon? Oh, Bruce Parlomen is presently held the position. I will open up the floor for nominations for the three-year term of the Leland and Gray director. Are there any nominations? Bruce Parlomen has been nominated. Oh, thank you. Been respectfully declined. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Drew Hazelton.
Drew Hazelton has been nominated.
He's not declining, no.
I'm watching all the mourn calls go through his face.
Wait before you decline.
Everyone's accepted the nomination. Are there any other nominations for the position? Hearing none, I declare the nomination is closed. All in favor of Drew Hazelton serving as your Leland and Gray three-year director? Please say aye. Those opposed? One negative vote? I see a pattern developing here. All right, and any abstentions? Very good, thank you. Drew, you won the position. That fills all those positions, yes.
Well, and again, I forget how long it's been, but I feel like it's been a while since I've, so I think we need to name Bruce.
How many years were you on that?
Six.
Six. Thank you. Let us move on to article three. Shall the voters of Jamaica School District authorize the school directors to borrow in anticipation of taxes, grants, or other revenue? Now, your motion? I'm sorry? So moved. Second? Second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all positive questions? All in favor of this article number three? Please say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, so passed. Article three passed. Article four, shall the voters authorize the school directors to spend unanticipated funds such as grants and/or gifts? Have a motion on the floor here? Ralph? Second? Who said second? Oh, good, okay. All right, although, any discussion on this article? Hearing none, asked for all positive votes? Please say aye. Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Thank you, so passed. All right, now, we move on to article five and I believe you have a change you wanna make to this.
Um, a small change. Just some wording at the bottom was left unclear. Um, it says this projected spending per equalized pupil is 6.7% and the words lower or should be crossed out because it's higher and the answer is higher. So it's, should read is 6.7% higher than spending for the current year.
All right, therefore, I'll read the warning or the article. Shall the voters of Jamaica School District approve the school board, the school board to spend $1,195,438, which is the amount the school board had determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $15,402 per equalized pupil. This projected spending for equalized pupil is 6.7% higher than spending for the current year. And that 1.1 million is appropriate?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion on this article. I need to have a motion on the floor before we can discuss. Ed has, and a second?
My second.
Okay, very good. And now, we can open the discussion.
Is there a penalty, statewide penalty for that?
Can we restate the question?
Yeah, he's asking if there's a penalty, if we're gonna be paying a penalty and we are, most of the towns in our district, in our surprise reunion are also. However, it's not as bad as once feared and on page 56 and 57, there are some worksheets and the numbers have changed. This went to publication before the legislature changed the law to make it less painful for all of us. So if you look on page 57, lines 16, 17, and 18 are in like a box. The per pupil figure on 16 is correct, but the equalized, the number 17, that line is changed and that's been changed to 14, 83101. And then they also changed the amount of the penalty. So initially, it was gonna be 100% penalty. If you went over, you know, $100, you pay a $100 penalty. But they changed it to be 40%. So the bottom line is that in line 18, if the penalty amount instead of being 702.79 per pupil, as it says in your book, is actually 22820. And that makes, you know, a pretty significant difference. So instead of paying $40,000 in a penalty, we're gonna pay about $13.
What is an equalized pupil versus pupil?
Laura, you wanna take a crack at that? She's asking, she wants a definition of an equalized pupil.
Right, so it's a, it's an average number for two years, so it's not the exact number of students that we have, it's an average.
You mean that it's the enrollment changes between the two years, it's, it's average between?
Yeah, so if you look at, currently, we have 67 students in arms of the law and our four-year-olds aren't counted as a full student anyway. So if you look at, I don't know the page of this, but you'll notice that the equalized pupil number varies and it's not really the average.
The number that we had used, like state's using is 56 for our current, for the people, the people count in this, on this worksheet.
No, your enrollment number is 56.
Our enrollment number is 67 currently, but our equalized pupil number given to us by the state is 56.
Drew?
Why was there such a drop between, if you look at 14, 15, there are 62, 63, and a sudden drop to 56?
We anticipated that this would happen.
Could you just stand up so people can really hear you? Thank you.
We anticipated that this would happen when I first knew about this, nearly nine years ago, there were about 75, 77 students and, and now we've dropped 10. So we knew that this was going to happen, projected from here on out, that it will remain about the same. But it was projected since, you know, Frank Lepper, CFO, who has now moved to Wyndham Southeast, but he projected that the equalized people would drop eventually to this degree and that we made constant, as long as our enrollment remains similar to what it is now.
All right, yes.
It appears to me from looking at page 56 that you kept pretty close to a very low increase for the last three years and, and that it would seem inevitable that eventually you have to do some things to create opportunities for kids because, and especially insurance. I know insurance premiums went really up a lot this year and also special ed costs may have been a factor, a big factor in this, am I correct?
And salaries, that is not included in that line, that the raises hadn't been included, now it's all up to date and also we've been under budgeting some money for the food program and we realized that we needed to really get it into reality, so we did all that and so that's, that's where, why we're at.
I see that our representative Oliver Olson is here, so I'd like to suspend, if it's okay with the body, to suspend this discussion and allow Oliver to address the body. Is that amenable to people? Very good. Oliver?
Excellent, well, thank you all for welcoming me to your town meeting. Great to see so many folks here today. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Oliver Olson. I'm your representative in Montpelier. I represent the towns of Jamaica, Lunen Derry, Stratton, Weston, and Widdholt. So, I just came from Weston and Lunen Derry, so this is my third, third town meeting today. And I'm happy to report they're all very well attended, so. I'd like to, to start out today with, by recognizing a really phenomenal individual and then I'll, I'll move on to some, some brief comments and take any questions that you have. So, the, the House and the Senate passed a, a resolution honoring this individual and I'm going to, I'm gonna read from, from this resolution. So this was offered by myself as well as Representative Emily Wong, who lives in, in New Fane, and our, and the two state senators for Wyndham County, Senator Becca Ballant and Jeanette White. So this is a House concurrent resolution honoring Ralph Coleman of Jamaica for his dedicated civic leadership in the town of Jamaica and for the Leland and Gray Union Middle and High School. And the resolution reads, whereas Ralph Coleman's family has resided in the town of Jamaica for over a century and a quarter and he has a strong interest in his community's well-being and whereas the town of Jamaica and the Leland and Gray Union Middle and High School Board were extraordinarily fortunate that Ralph Coleman devoted decades to serving in leadership roles and whereas Ralph Coleman's interest in property-related matters was reflected in his service both on the Jamaica zoning board and as a lister and whereas Ralph Coleman placed a great importance on providing youngsters with a solid educational foundation and he served as a member of the Jamaica Village School Board. And whereas he extended his educational focus to include serving multiple terms on the Board of Leland and Gray and whereas the expertise Ralph Coleman developed as a board member provided invaluable, proved invaluable during his recently concluded role as the Leland and Gray moderator and whereas he developed a broad knowledge of Jamaica's municipal government as a member of the town select board and whereas the voters of Jamaica respected and trusted Ralph Coleman's good judgment and sense of fairness and in 1978, they elected him to serve as town moderator. And whereas his mastery of Robert's Rules of Order and ability to facilitate a meeting that was open to all viewpoints, yet conducted in a dignified and respectful manner, became the hallmark of his service as town moderator. And whereas Ralph Coleman's ideal personality for presiding at both calm and contentious town meetings enabled him to serve in this decisive, excuse me, decisive position for 37 years. And whereas he has concluded his many roles as a conscientious citizen and public servant and a legislative expression of appreciation is in order. Now therefore be resolved by the Senate and the House of Representatives that the General Assembly honors Ralph Coleman of Jamaica for his many years of dedicated civic leadership in the town of Jamaica and for the Leland and Gray Union High School. And therefore be it resolved that the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to Ralph Coleman.
Thank you all and it's been a pleasure.
So a couple of things. One, I'm gonna leave up here copies of Doyle Town Meeting poll. For those of you who don't know, Senator Doyle has served in the Vermont State Senate for nearly 50 years. He started the tradition roughly 40 years ago of distributing these, these informal surveys through legislators to town meetings across the state as a way of gauging public opinion. So, I'll, I'll leave these up here. He really does appreciate getting as much feedback as, as he can from throughout the state. And if you wouldn't mind, if we could leave it at the town office and I can come pick them up later in the week and bring those up to Montpelier, would be wonderful. So, a couple of, a couple of thoughts on some of the issues and the challenges we're facing in the state and the, the issues that I'm working on up in the legislature. So, by far, the biggest issue, and it's not an issue, it's really, it's multi-threaded and multi-dimensional, is, is our changing demographic profile as a state. We're now the second oldest state in the nation and we have one of the lowest birth rates in the nation. And we see the manifestation of these trends in everything from our declining student enrollment to a shrinking number of taxpayers under age 65. And to put this in perspective, across the state, over the past seven years, we've lost over 10,000 taxpayers under age 65. Over the past 10 years, we've lost over 10,000 students from our pre-K through 12 system. This year alone, we've lost well over 1,000 students from the system. Meanwhile, we continue to see spending pressure on, in our human services that the state provides as well as our education system. And this is on top of a very shaky tax base and in the face of a, of a very anemic recovery from the Great Recession. Getting to the root cause of these challenges is not easy. There's no, there's no magic solution. There's no silver bullet that's gonna turn things around. It's something that requires a lot of focus and a lot of effort. On the education front, I have spoken at great length about Act 46. Hopefully, many of you had an opportunity to attend one of the forums I did in the fall on Act 46, so I, I won't go through that in detail, but happy to answer any, any questions about that later on. Other than to say, you know, Act 46 has, there are things about Act 46 that I like, there are things about Act 46 I don't like. It's an imperfect piece of legislation. Any legislation of this magnitude and scope is going to be imperfect. But the challenges that we're facing as a state, and particularly in our education system, are ones that, that can no longer be ignored. The trends are, are quite significant and for many years, we've, we've kicked the can down the road and we've, we've reached a point where as a state, we really need to start having some, some meaningful conversations about how we can structure our education system to better serve our students, provide more equitable educational opportunities for our students and to do so at a cost that we, we can afford. Closely related to this is, is the issue of economic development. If you're, if you live in Burlington or, you know, anywhere in the Chittenden County area, things are really, they're, quite frankly, they're pretty rosy. It's, you know, it's the most urban area of Vermont. They have, you know, increasing population, very, very low unemployment, the highest median wage rates in the state. But the, the issue is that those statistics mask some of the, the issues that we're facing elsewhere in the state, particularly here in southern Vermont. A number of, of policy leaders and myself have been talking about these issues for, for a few years now and along with my colleague, Representative Laura Sibilia from Dover and a representative from Bennington, we actually passed some legislation last year that established an economic development zone for southern Vermont. It's the first time it's ever been done here in Vermont. We established a zone that broadly encompasses Bennington and Wyndham Counties plus the town of Weston. And with that, we created a task force. And with that, we created a task force to look at the issue of economic development in southern Vermont. That task force was chaired by Wayne Brinkwurst, a resident of Weston, who for many years ran the Stratton Resort, very familiar with the local economy here in southern Vermont. That committee did incredible work. They did so on a volunteer basis. None of them were compensated. There was absolutely no state funding. In fact, the final report had a note in the inside cover that made reference to the fact that it was not printed at taxpayer expense. What it did not say was that it was printed at the expense of Mr. Wayne Brinkwurst. They issued the report in December with a number of recommendations. They, just a few weeks ago, came before the House and Senate Economic Development Committees, presented their findings and their recommendations. We had a private meeting with the Speaker of the House to enlist his support for some of the specific recommendations that will require some funding. Broadly speaking, those recommendations include a pretty significant marketing and outreach campaign to promote southern Vermont, not only as a place to visit, but a place to visit, fall in love with, and move to. And then the other piece of this is to expand a program known as SEVITS, which is the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategy, which has been focused around Wyndham County. There was a recommendation in this report to actually expand that to encompass all of southern Vermont around the bounds of this economic development zone. And by doing so, it actually will, the zone itself, now that it's been officially designated by the state, and the expansion of this initiative known as SEVITS, if we can expand that to include all of southern Vermont, it will go a long way towards opening up some doors to federal funding programs, tax incentives, et cetera, through the EDA program at a federal level. So on economic developments, those are some of the things that I've been working with. Closer to home, I've been working pretty closely with Drew Hazelton on some problems we have with how we fund ambulance services in the state of Vermont. The long story short is, we have dramatically expanded the Medicaid population in Vermont. The challenge is that Medicaid reimburses roughly 80 cents on the Medicare dollar for treatment for most services, with the exception of ambulances, and they get about 40 cents on the dollar. So every time Rescue Inc. goes out on a Medicaid call, they lose money on the supplies alone. It's a pretty dismal situation. And what happens is, that shortfall has to be made up from somewhere, and that all too often, with increasing frequency, is falling back on municipal assessments. And we're essentially funding it through the property tax. The shame in all of this is that the Medicaid program is a state-federal partnership. So for every, you know, as we put in money from the state in our Medicaid program, we actually get a federal match. And we use that to pay reimbursements through the Medicaid program. So we have fallen into a really silly situation where we're raising money through the property tax to make up for this Medicaid shortfall with the ambulance service, but we're foregoing the federal match because it doesn't go through the Medicaid system. So we're literally just throwing money out the window. So Drew's been very active with the Vermont Ambulance Association, has spent a considerable amount of time up in Montpelier with myself and a number of other legislators to call attention to this issue and try to come up with a resolution. So another issue, Vermont Health Connect. Many of you have contacted me over the past couple of years with challenges pertaining to Vermont Health Connect. Fortunately, the challenges are not as severe as they were when the system first switched on. They actually subsided quite a bit over the past year, but for a variety of reasons, I've actually seen an uptick in the number of complaints and calls that I've been receiving over the last three or four months or so. I was the lead sponsor of some legislation that passed last year, which will allow folks who are not eligible for subsidies to direct enroll, so they can bypass the whole Health Connect system and go directly to the insurance company, which cuts out a lot of the problems. That is now an option if you're not eligible for subsidies. If you have problems with Vermont Health Connect, if you're having problems enrolling, renewing, or if you have a change of circumstances such as, you know, marriage, birth of a child, divorce, et cetera, and you're hitting a brick wall, try not to bang your head on the brick wall more than two or three times and give me a call. I'm happy to help resolve those issues as frustrating as I know they are. So one final comment. I'm a big advocate for something known as a 529 plan. Has anybody here heard of a 529 plan? Show of hands. Okay, good. So a lot of hands didn't go up, and I just want you all to know, because I really want to start promoting these more heavily, 529 plan is basically the equivalent of an IRA or a 401K for college savings. So if you have a child or grandchild, and you want to put away money for college, Vermont actually offers a very generous tax credit. It's basically for every dollar you put into one of these 529 savings plans, and they're administered by VSAC, by the way, you get a 10 cent tax credit on your tax return. So you could literally, you know, even if you've got a kid in college, you could literally put, you know, some money into one of these accounts, and you get 10 cents, you know, back in the way of a tax refund, rather. But the point is that these are great opportunities, you know, the younger you can start with your kids and your grandkids, you know, these are tax advantaged, so that, you know, the savings or the earnings on the savings actually accrue tax-free, assuming you use those savings in the future to pay for post-secondary education. And as I mentioned, Vermont offers one of the most generous tax credits in the state. Unfortunately, very, very few people take advantage of these accounts. And with the continuing challenge that we have with affordability of college, nothing is more important than starting early, saving and taking advantage of, you know, what's essentially, you know, free money. I mean, there is no free money, but it's 10 cents on the dollar, which is nothing to sneeze at. So with that, I will open up for questions. Brandon.
You said, "Has anybody heard of 529?", and I did not raise my hand, but that's because my kids are older and I forgot that we actually did do that. And you can put in, what is it, up to $5,000 a year, I think. Not that many of us or any of us could do that, but you can put money in and take it out, and you aren't taxed at any time, as I recall, right?
Correct. As long as the money is used for post-secondary education.
So you get the credit, and you do not pay taxes on that money at all, and they take your work, quite honestly, on where your kids go to school.
Yeah, it's a pretty easy program.
Yeah.
So if we have existing 529s, is it easy to maybe change it into Vermont State 529?
Yes, contact VSAC. So in order to be eligible for the tax credit, it has to be a plan that's administered by VSAC. So if you contact VSAC, they can give you information on how to roll the money over. You won't get, I don't believe you can get a tax credit for money that's rolled over, but any new contributions, you're eligible for that tax credit. There is a limit of $250 of tax credit per year, per tax filer, but if you've got a joint filer, it's $500 essentially.
Excuse me?
Great, yes.
And online, there's a lot of information about this, and there are different strategies you can use as far as whether the grandparents do it, or the parents do it, or whatever, and how it works for you personally. And you can call and ask, because everybody's situation is different. And they do recommend, because there's strategies to it, to make it optimal for you.
Absolutely. Based on the age of your child in particular, so, you know, very similar strategies that you would look at for retirement. You know, you can afford to be more aggressive, you know, the younger the child is, but as you want to take a more conservative strategy as the child, you know, ages. But again, I know some people, I actually served with some legislators who knew nothing about these 529 plans until they got in the legislature. I had a colleague of mine who was on the Ways and Means Committee, which is the tax committee. He knew nothing about these programs until VSAC came in to testify one day, and he was like, "Wow, I wish I had known about this like 15 years ago." But then what he did was, I mean, he just put, his kid was in college, he put the money in to a, you know, very conservative investment, pulled it right back out, and took the 10% tax credit. So, you know, at least he got something out of it. But anyways, VSAC is, those are the folks you want to contact, and where you can get information. Lane.
I want to back up, Oliver, too. You were talking about the southeastern Vermont, or, excuse me, the southern Vermont Economic Development Zone. And I've been sort of following that from afar. Recently, in Manchester, the Manchester Chamber is spearheading a group called the Cooperative?
Partnership.
The Partnership, okay. And is that part of this program? I guess I'm sensing, I receive a lot of emails from the southeastern group, and now this, all of a sudden, I feel as though there's maybe some redundancy going on, and I'm just trying to, is the Partnership related to this?
It's not directly related, but I don't think it's redundant either.
Okay.
You know, some of the individuals, Seth Bongards in particular, I've had a lot of conversation with about this, and I know he's spoken with Wayne Brinkwurst. So there's definite conversation, and there is recognition that, and one of the reasons why we formed this zone and this committee and this task force was to look at how we could better coordinate all these various activities that are going on that have traditionally not been well coordinated. So I think, you know, one of the several positive things that have come out of this exercise is, one, we've really elevated the conversation and the focus around economic development in southern Vermont. And with that, you know, we're working to try to get people to start talking to each other, so that people are doing things with a little bit more coordination. Yes.
Is there any kind of focus on a specific industry that the EDA is focusing on to attract people into Vermont?
So there's one of the, the approach with SEVITS, so SEVITS went through a process that resulted in something known as a SEZ, it's a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And the idea is to try to expand that to include Bennington County as well. But the concept of a SEZ is, rather than trying to create an industry out of thin air, is to focus on what your assets are within a region, and to look at the clusters that already exist. So for example, in Wyndham County, one of the things that has been identified is there's a so-called green building cluster. So there are a lot of folks, and this has been proven over and over again throughout the country, the key to successful economic development is to identify clusters and to build off of those clusters. Because you have to have some sort of a critical mass of people with a talent, the experience, the skills, et cetera, that are somewhat related. And from that critical mass, you can build off of that. So you have interrelated, you know, businesses, partnerships, and so green building is one example. There's been a real movement, you know, in parts of Wyndham County focused on the green development industry, a green building industry. Specialty Foods is another example. So, you know, there's been real success with Against the Grain Bakery in Brattleboro. You know, harvesting, the brand that we have, the Vermont brand, has a lot of cachet outside the state of Vermont, are sort of agricultural kind of roots, and food manufacturing, putting those things together. And one of the assets we have in southern Vermont when it comes to specialty foods is, we have the largest grocery distributor in Brattleboro and Keene, namely CNS Wholesale Grocers. So that's why you've seen like the yogurt factory pop up in Brattleboro, because, you know, they make the yogurt there, they just bring it over to Keene, it goes into the warehouse, and it's on the door all across the eastern seaboard. Same thing with a company like Against the Grain. They're able to leverage these assets that we have, rather than trying to create something from scratch. Cool. Yes?
So once you find those groups of critical mass, where does it go from there?
So part of the focus is defining these groups, and then getting, you know, building specific strategies that are targeted to harnessing those groups, giving them additional resources, support, you know, networking opportunities, things like that, marketing, cooperative marketing, and building off from there. Cool. All right. Here are no other questions. I thank you all for your time. Great to see so many people turn out for Town Meeting Day. And I'll let you all go. If you have, again, if you ever have any questions or concerns, issues, whatever, feel free to call me, send me an email, that's what I'm here for. So again, I want to thank Ralph for all of his years of service to the town. So, thank you.
If the body's agreeable, I'll unsuspend our proceedings and go back to Article Number Five in the discussion we were having, which was very technical with the questions. We want to proceed from there. Are there other questions that people wish to address? CJ?
Yeah, on page 58, I have a question about two lines. One went down, one went up, and I just don't understand what that means. The second line says, "Education spending went down by 4.55%, and yet the equalized per people went up." So I just don't know how those are figured. Can you explain, please?
I believe that it's really having to do with what we were receiving from the state for the number of students that we have. It's the education spending grant that we received, so that because our per people count is down, the amount we receive is down.
And that's where the education spending line is on the strong?
Right.
Is from the state funding?
That's my understanding. Laura, does that match with you? Do we need a sentence?
Yeah, it's a formula. So the state establishes a rate, you simply multiply it by the equalized people number, and it's without a, at 866.
Any other questions?
Great. On that same page, I would point out that near the bottom, a couple of numbers are changed because of how the legislature changed the law. For instance, where it says estimated combined school tax, including Leland and Gray, in bold, it shows 1.4477, and it's now, the estimated tax is 1.4277, not a big change. And then the percentage underneath that, that says 2.91%, is actually 2.88%, not a big change, but that's just from the change in the law, and that we're paying less of a penalty.
Any questions up here? I realize I have my back to you folks. All right. Any other questions from the floor? I'll take a motion on Article Five. Somebody said so moved. Does that again? Second?
Second.
Flowers. And I will call the question therefore. All in favor of passing Article Five as stated? Please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Any abstentions? So passed. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to Article Six, to compensate directors of the Jamaica School District $300 each per year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, we've got to double whoever. And second?
Second.
Any discussion on this article?
It's ridiculous.
Okay, it's ridiculous. Agree.
I have a question.
Oh, Patty?
I just want to thank the school board for, I know it's probably about negative two cents an hour that you get for all the work you do. And you do a great job, and they take such good care of all the kids and students in our area. Thank you very much. You know, I serve every job.
Are there any other points of discussion? Not all entertaining. A motion to close? Second?
Second.
There we go. Okay. All in favor of Article Number Six? Please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. So passed. Now I'm going to just reverse this.
Now, I'm going to just reverse this, articles seven and eight. I'd like to move to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting, before we set next year's agenda time. So...
But someone else, if someone else has something, I can go first.
We'll come from the floor first. Are there any business to come before the school director's vote? What about yours?
First, I really want to thank other towns for the incredible job they've done, the years that they've been school board. They've really been there when we needed them, very dependable and doing a lot of extra work. So, thank you. So, we wanted, we had promised that we'd come back and talk to you about Act 46 and the changes that we're working on. So, Act 46, I think most of you have an understanding at this point what it's about. I'm not going to go into that. We do have some handouts here that summarize the act and the timeline. And also, one of our committees put together a worksheet so people can help me grab those or we can pass them out if people want us to. So, basically, Act 46 is requiring school districts to consolidate governance. The goal is to have fewer school boards and each school board will be overseeing multiple schools. Some people have asked us, why do we have to change at all? Do we, can we just do nothing? And for one thing, as you heard from Oliver, we have to do something. Jamaica's been saying that for a while anyway. In 2004, we had, I believe, 101 students. And now, sixteen years later, we have 56. You know, apples to apples without the pre-K kids. So, we've basically been cut in half almost and we really have to do something to manage the money more efficiently and make sure the kids get the best possible education. But on top of that, if we don't do anything, recently came to light that we will, we would lose our small schools grant and we would lose the ADM whole harmless provision. And essentially, it would mean that our education tax rate would go up almost 18% just from those, losing those two things we have right now. If we keep moving forward and follow the state's plan, we get to keep those. So, we'd also miss out on the tax incentives that they're offering and we would lose the chance to control, to decide our own destiny here with our school. So, as a school board, we decided we are going to act. And we presented, all of you, four scenarios at our public meeting in December. And they all entail some sort of change, some much more drastic than others. And at that point, 12 people volunteered and we started having committee meetings. We're now down to about eight people and not including the school board. And two of them are going to be needing some extended time away. It's been a huge job. We've been meeting every other week and doing research in between times. And those people, I cannot thank them enough for what they've been doing to help our kids. It's been a huge project and it's nowhere near done. So, they're going to give you an update shortly about where, how far they've come. We are still in the preliminary phase of the research, but we're doing, we're doing a lot. One thing that hasn't worked out the way we had hoped so far is that we had been told that we could have, we would have a consultant that would be able to work with our committees and do a lot of the really detailed research. And let's just say there's been some high level of this organization and at this point we still are not, we don't, still don't know if we are going to be able to get a consultant or not. So, we're very much hoping to have an answer within the week. It's been very frustrating. And if we don't, the work of committees is going to be really monumental. As you know, we're in a tricky situation with the Leland and Gray Union. As it stands right now, we would need a vote of all five of the towns. That's Jamaica, Wyndham, Townsend, Brookline and New Fane would all have to vote positively to let us out of the Leland and Gray Union. Kind of a long shot. There is a bill right now that's been introduced in the House, number 732, I believe, that Laura Sibilia from Dover introduced that would, seeks to change the law. It has nothing to do with us, but there are several other towns in other parts of Vermont that are in the same situation and want to be able to leave their union. And so, she did put forward that bill. But Oliver's telling me the bill's not going anywhere. It's very unlikely that it's going to pass, at least this year. So, if you feel strongly about choice, any form of choice, now is the time to get involved. You can, we are sort of being discouraged in our search for creative solutions. We're still pressing on, but we are willing to continue this process if you want us to. If you are interested in choice, please speak out and get involved. Help us with the committees for the next couple of months. We could really use some extra hands. So, regardless, we are still planning on having a meeting, a public meeting. It's going to be on May 17th. That's our normal school board meeting night. We'll have a public meeting similar to what we did in December. We will present everything that we have gathered about the four options at that point in time and we will ask you for your opinion about which direction that we should pursue. So, I would, I'm going to turn it over to the committee chairs to make their reports, but does anyone have any questions for me before we do that?
Any questions at this point?
Among the four solutions that you seem to be following so far, is one of the underlying themes being out of the union?
Right. So, if anybody wants, there's these, the four choices are listed here. This is the same sheet you got if you came to the December meeting. Three of the four choices involve leaving the Leland and Gray Union. In order to have any form of choice, we would need to leave that union. So, one op, the fourth option, which the committee's going to tell you about involves, is still involves change, but we would stay with that, with that union and become a district that is on any count. I'll let them talk about it more, but...
Patty?
So, is the focus, and I think I know the answer to this, but my understanding of Act 46 is the focus is not to leave a union. The focus is to create equitable educational opportunities for all of our kids. That is not a huge burden upon the taxpayers, not necessarily to be focused on getting out of a union and having school choice.
Right. That's exactly true. And that's why, you know, we, there's that one choice that, you know, is probably the easiest choice, which is to stay with Leland and Gray. But as I mentioned in December, we had had so many people over the course of the last several years come and talk to us about how we could possibly get choice. Mostly, they're talking about the high school level, but some at other levels. That we, and we were being encouraged very strongly by, by the state to be creative and, you know, look outside the box for ways that we could consolidate with boards that we might not have considered consolidating with before. So, we did get creative and some of the, some of the possibilities have included choice, but it's certainly not our aim by any means. We're just trying to cover all the bases and make sure that people's voices who were speaking for choice were heard and responded to. And we're still going through that process.
CJ?
So, the choices are on page 55, right? Getting the people in front of them without the handout in hand, you still have, correct?
I believe so.
Page, the fourth paragraph?
I did list them out, yeah, whether, yes, because this was a...
Right.
What's the best way to get involved?
You could contact any of us on the board and we'll contact Laura Hazard from school so she can give you the information for us. Our next meeting is going to be on March 10th at the school at 7:00. Encourage people to come and we'll put you right in the committee if you're willing.
Any other questions or do you want to present the options you were talking about? Oh, sorry. Connie?
My question is that when we make the final decision, will it be a townwide voter decision or will it be a school board decision?
That's a really good question and the answer is somewhat complicated. Of course. The way I understand it is that technically it is, well, there's sort of two components. So, the initial part is actually technically a school board decision. Like, we could decide which option we wanted to pursue and we would just do that. Now, we have decided as a board that we want the town's input, we want your involvement and we will make a decision because we have to, but it will be with the input of the town. And we do want to have this meeting where we'll at least get your opinion on, you know, in writing, but it's not going to be an official vote, it will be an opinion. And then we'll make a decision. Now, whatever decision that we arrive at, eventually we'll have to become, we'll have to come to the town as an actual vote. But at that point, it won't be a vote between four choices. It will be a vote to either do the change or not do the change. So, we're going to come to the informational meeting on May 17th with the four choices still sitting there and you'll get to give your opinion about which choice you want us to pursue further. We'll go with that choice and then, and then the town, probably not even from what the consultant we were talking to said, it may not be till next year at town meeting, that there would be an actual article that you could vote on and the article would say something like, you know, we vote to merge our school board with the Leland and Gray Union, you know, school district or whatever, whatever it will say. And you'll say yes or no. That would get a vote. But hopefully by then, we'll have tons of information for you and you can make a, you know, a wise choice.
I think it's important that you know that the confusion around getting a consultant had to do with the state and not with you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's been incredibly frustrating. Yeah. They don't, I think that everyone at the state level is probably at least as overwhelmed as all the school boards are with this law and trying to implement it. So, I'm trying to be kind because, you know, one person clearly told me we had been approved and the next, you know, two days later, no, we hadn't been approved. I mean, it was, it's really been difficult. And whether, there's also a shortage of availability of consultants. So, even if we're approved, there's no guarantee we can even, we can even get one. So, it's, it's challenging. And I just, again, I really thank the committee members for having worked so hard so far and I hope they'll stick it out.
So, mark your calendar for May 17.
May 17. We will do, you know, an actual warning and everything. I mean, hopefully that day will stick. If there's some, if we just aren't already, if there's some, you know, unforeseen circumstance, we may have to change the date, but we'll warn it, it'll be a warning at public meeting.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there someone to present something or you're set?
What I want to do now is move to the individual committees and let them give their little update, not little, their...
That agreeable tall?
So, we can start with the first, the option one committee if you guys are ready.
Proceed.
Option one, not listed in any kind of priority order, but as Stephanie mentioned, it seems like the one that everyone at first glance would think would be the easiest way to go. And that's the option to create a single district with the union towns and create a single board for the elementary school level. We do have a handout up here. This would help us to share resources, have a single budget, probably have a little bit better negotiation capabilities when we're negotiating contracts or supplies for all of the, all of the schools. Will also help to align the education amongst all of the schools as we feed into Leland and Gray. There are some things that people probably aren't thinking about and that is the risk of what happens when we have that single budget and a single board. And taking a look at maintaining all of those schools, it might not seem the most logical move to keep all of the schools. So, it's something that we have to keep in mind that there's some cons to going this way and possible negatives that we really don't want. But May 17th, we'll break it all down. This particular layout is the one that mostly looks at the RED study that was done a few years ago. Based on that RED study, they did come up with how the board makeup would look and some different ideas. So, we put some highlights down on the handout here for you to take a look at, but we really encourage everyone to come May 17th to hear the pros, the cons, the good, the bad, the ugly. Becky Scott, Anne Reynolds and I are the ones that are chairing this particular committee. Any questions?
So, my understanding is that no matter which choice you pick, you are under one
school board. It's, it's not just that one option that makes you under one governing board. Each option means that we are part of another segment wherever...
Depends on, depends on the option, not all the options have a consolidated board.
Well, actually, I...
Yes, you're under one board no matter what.
We have to.
So, you have a certain number of votes based on however that board. And that board has the ability to close schools at some point in time.
Right now, the law, sorry, right now, the law states that...
With the vote.
Yes, yes, with the vote.
But that one board can recommend eventually. And that's not the meaning of this law. That's not the purpose of this law is to close schools. But eventually down the road, if that one board decides on any of these choices, decides they want to close a school, they can bring that board to the town of where the school would be closed. So, it's not just that one option that has those factors.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So, there would be one elementary board and one high school board, is that correct? There would be one more for K through 12?
Okay. Can we do a side by side?
There would be one, so there's, it's kind of a two-part question. There would be one board, the state's goal is to have pre-K through 12 school boards. So, there would be one, in this option, there would be one school board that would do all the elementary schools and Leland and Gray High School. And then there would be, within our supervisory union, there would be other boards that govern, for instance, Dover, like if Dover and Ward Row or they can't combining into one and whatever other configurations come up, you know, like what Marlboro decides to do, we're not sure. So...
There's a lot of other conversations happening with a lot of, with all the other elementary school.
But this particular option is talking about one board for K through 12.
This is combining us with Wyndham, Townsend, New Brook.
But the other, the other, just the Wyndham Central is also itself looking to combine with other supervisory unions that have a different makeup than us. So, bringing all of them together, making a much bigger situation, which that would, where you come into the complication of side by sides and things and different boards. It's getting complicated.
So, all the other options, and I know your option one and you're up there and I'm talking about all the others, but all the others hinge on the rest of the Leland and Gray community letting us leave. Why did they do that? Like, are you putting all your time and energy into this and they're going to go, no, sorry, and we're being held hostage? That's like, we have to, we actually have to say?
I mean, that's a question that comes up in everyone's mind a lot. And we know that we're working against the odds here, but we just, we feel like we can't ask to be let out of the union until we know that that's what Jamaica wants. And so, we're just doing this work in good faith and thinking either we're, you know, people are going to decide they really want that and we will push for it, you know, if it's possible. The law may change. Like I said, there's, you know, there is a bill up there right now that's not doing anything, but we just decided to move forward because we don't know how it's all going to work out and we wanted to do the legwork ahead of time and, and it's possible that none of the options except for this one are doable at this point in time, but the information that we're gathering may be helpful for a later decision that has to be made. So, we're, we are moving ahead. I feel somewhat bad as the first, you know, as the chair, that I'm asking for the due work that may be essentially a waste of time, but I, I think we're all on board that we just want to move forward until, and to get, get from Jamaica what it is that Jamaica wants.
I didn't mean to imply that you're wasting your time. I think it's awesome. I just wish that we could find a way that, that the state or somebody could say that these other towns, you cannot hold the权of Jamaica out.
Well, I would recommend calling Oliver or, you know, any reps about that for sure. Absolutely. Oh, okay. Anne, say something. Sorry.
I just wanted to mention that it's really important as you're looking at these choices to not focus so much about getting out of the Leland and Gray. It's really about what's the best thing for our kids. And there are many different combinations that could possibly meet those, those ideas or desires for our kids. And so, while they, three of them, I mean, the practicality is that they do involve a choice option, but to remember that this is really about what are, how do we create the best possible educational opportunity? And sort of the logistics of it, you have to think about as well, but this is really our opportunity as a community to really, if there is a better opportunity, to seize it. Because I don't think this will come up again or hopefully not.
Jenny over here and then...
I think one of the things that we've discovered as we talk about this, and it's frustrating to be looking at options that may never happen, but at the same time, what we're finding is we're discovering a lot about what other schools are doing and discovering a lot about what the community, at this point, it's, you know, the dozen of us or whatever, think that we want. And I think it will be helpful moving forward that if we have an idea of what we want, we may figure out how to get there. And this is kind of the time to do it. So, if people are interested in, you know, how Jamaica school and, and, you know, how our school system is going to look, this is the time to join and figure that out.
So, is some of the time to come up? When some of the other committee members come up?
Does anyone have any further questions for this particular committee?
I have a question.
Okay.
So is it my understanding that this scenario has the highest risk of these elementary schools maybe closing?
No.
It doesn't, no.
It's just that there is a risk. I mean, there.
There's no guarantee.
Also, if one wouldn't necessarily close, then we would consolidate. Is that something you've thought about?
Right. You know, but I think when we look at these options and in chatting with people in town, and I think they look at option one as us staying status quo. And we have to understand that you'll have a single board making a decision about all of the schools for the towns and making recommendations to, you know, if the numbers continue to be down, to make some of those changes.
Any other questions from the floor? For this committee?
I just think one thing we have to keep focused on, though, if we choose to leave Leland and Gray, we are responsible for any debt that they have. And that would be on top of anything else that we have to do. And that's a big issue.
It is an issue, sorry. It is an issue. We are, that's one of the things we had hoped that the consultant's going to figure out for us, is exactly how much we would be responsible for. So in the absence of a consultant, I guess we'll figure it out. We're going to figure it out from somewhere. But we will have that solid information certainly by, by the May meeting.
There are three more committees that we want to hear from, so maybe we can move on to the second one. Is that okay with the group?
Yes.
All right, second group?
So first, I'm Caroline Pearson.
I'm Jen Connor.
And.
And our third member is Popper.
And we just wanted to just let everybody know, our, our committee in particular is to form a pre-K and six district with Dover and Wardsborough. Our goal, well, the beginning part is to keep JVS, one school board for all towns involved that we mentioned, to remain in the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, and then to offer a choice for grades seven through 12, which on the bottom of that, it denotes, what Stephanie had mentioned, that that would require us leaving the Leland and Gray Union, which would include all five towns opting us, voting us out of that.
I'm not sure if Stephanie mentioned that in order to become one school district, all of the schools within that district have to have the same setup. So if, if it's school choice, all of them have to be school choice, whether it's for elementary or high school. So that's part of the way all of this was broken up, so that we, you know, we are following what other schools are already, have, already have set up.
We're going to read ours.
Yeah, we're going to read our priorly written thing, so obviously we'll address the questions after. So our committee has met several times focusing on the equity question, which is at the core of Act 46. Wardsborough is an award-winning school. Dover's school, given its size and location, is in a relatively wealthy area, and a community committed to education has been able to offer a quality education to its students, which includes an international baccalaureate, which is a program that sets high standards emphasizing on creative and critical thinking and discussions controlled largely by students. If the goal of equitable education for all students becomes a reality under Act 46, joining these schools in a single school district could be an advantage to our students.
So part of the reason we say that, for instance Dover has, in some of their classrooms and maybe all, has computers for each of their students. If it's, if that's equitable across all the schools, then Jamaica should be getting that same thing and it's voted, it's paid for by the district, not just Jamaica, but all of the schools.
Just want, I could just jump in. Jamaica actually already does have one-to-one computing, so that.
We do.
The example is good, but.
Okay, but anyway.
There's plenty of other things that.
So this, this committee also discussed our concern that school choice be equitable for all our students. Seventy-two percent of Jamaica elementary students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and some of this population may not be able to take advantage of school choice given the challenges that they may face, both economically and otherwise. A family who faces a challenging and providing, faces the challenge of providing basic necessities such as food, clothing, to their kids may not have the resources to navigate the realities of school choice such as application process and transportation. As a community, we need to be sure that we have the mechanism in place to support these students if school choice is to truly be equitable. We further discuss the implications of fewer students at Leland and Gray and how this would affect that school's health and how it might affect our students if Leland and Gray is to continue to be a viable choice. And then we are meeting on Monday 7 in Wilmington. They are having a, a group to discuss the possibility of forming a school board down there, which is part of, Dover and Wardsborough will be there as well, and so we are going to be part of that discussion because we, Dover, and correct me if I'm wrong, will need to join in a union. And so we're exploring the possibilities of Dover, Jamaica and Wardsborough being our one union, which is why Jen had mentioned, if that is our union, then everyone needs to be choice or everyone needs to be a particular high school. Dover and Wardsborough currently have choice seven through 12, and we do not. So we are joining that meeting on Monday to discuss the further possibilities of either joining, what they're looking for, what we're looking for, and to discuss further possibilities. And then on our, our meeting on March 10th here at the school, Jamaica Village School, that's when the rest of the four committees are going to come together to discuss overlap of work and such, and especially now that we know we may really not be getting a consultant. We've been trying to do as much work as we can within our reach. None of us feel comfortable doing the job that the consultant would do. So as a, as a personal taxpayer here, if anybody has anything like that, we would love to discuss somebody because we're not sure what's going to happen with us getting the grant to have that. So if anybody has any wonderful CPAs or anything, please come and help us.
Are there any questions? Right here?
When you read that, it said, this is to stay in the union, but then at the end it said it was to get out of the union. So does that make for choice for a high school?
It's actually, yeah, it's actually, it's kind of confusing. So we are to stay within the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union. Right, so that shares substitutes and other specialty, art, music, all of those, they kind of share the burden of that with us. But Leland and Gray Union is what we are talking about leaving. So that's different than WCSU. And so Leland and Gray is again, comes back to the five towns of Jamaica, Wyndham, Townsend, New Fane and Brookline.
And they would also have to.
Absolutely.
As you're talking about the elementary level, that's what your study is about, not the high school, because the high school was.
It's actually, no, it's both. It's actually, because ours is seven through 12 choice, our group. So, so we would still be staying within the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, but leaving the Leland and Gray Union. So would be, it would change seven through 12.
So students would continue to go to Jamaica school until they get to seventh, and then at that point they would. Question here, yeah?
Oh, and you said some students, so if they decide to leave and have free choice, then to get to the school and high school if they choose, would they have to provide their own transportation?
That's what we're hoping to have the consultant help us with, is we're trying to figure out all of that fiscal information, which is pretty important.
We don't really have any idea, Eric, at this point, what the transportation looks like. It would very much depend on how many kids.
Correct.
Where, you know, how many kids and where they wanted to go.
Which, which is why our main concern is also what will happen to Leland and Gray if a large number of students leave, and we want to make sure that that is still an equitable education for our.
So currently, Wardsborough has a bus to, we to Vern Burton Academy, because there's enough students there to bring them over, but that, again, what they're saying, it has to be worked out and see what the student.
I think it meets in Bonville.
Bonville.
Yeah, they have like a, a community area where the kids all travel to, and then the bus takes the kids down to BBA.
Any other questions? Shall we go with number three? Always remember, when the state wants to kill Leviathan, it builds a bigger Leviathan. So, group three?
So our option would be for Jamaica to join a pre-K through eight district that includes Floodbrook. In this scenario, we would need to leave Wyndham Central Supervisory Union and also Leland and Gray Union, and we would join the Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union. Jamaica Village School would stay open at first, you know, there's no guarantees, for grades pre-K through six. And then from there, Jamaica students would attend one of the schools within our new district that has an operating middle school, which the way it's looking, the way they're combining now would be probably either Floodbrook Mammers, which is Manchester Elementary Middle School, or the Dorset School, which has a middle school. And then for high school, it would be choice, ninth and 12 would be choice. And again, we have the Leland and Gray Union. We've been in contact with the Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union. They've informed us that there is a study committee formed, so like this meeting that we're having in May to decide our, what we want to do. They've already gotten to that point and they're starting their real study committee. And that group is the Mountain Towns, which is Peru, Land Grove, Weston, Londonberry, Dorset, Manchester, Sonderland, Dandy and Mount Taver. So all those schools are going to be in one big district with one big school board, operating all of their schools. So in the coming weeks, we plan to attend this district's study committee meetings to learn more about the potential benefits of alignment with these towns, any impact on tax rate, any property value effects and resources we can share with these towns. At this point, we've kind of, we've looked into the schools to see what they offer, but I mean, I can't really stand here and list all the positives and negatives yet. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Any questions?
Questions? So.
Let's see how much more. Let's see how much more complicated this gets with group number four.
Did you have a question?
Oh, correct.
Does joining Bennington-Rutland, is that something that's just provisional?
Yeah, I asked them how, you know, if it would be a difficult process to join their union, and they said, really, the difficult process is to get out of your union. So they didn't make it seem like it would be a hard thing.
I see, so it requires.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Group number four?
My name is Chris Robbin. We're barely new, full-time residents in Jamaica. Our option, I guess you'd call it the whole enchilada option, involves closing Jamaica Village School, joining Lynn Hall, Stratton and maybe other district, school districts, joining a new supervisory union and full choice for pre-K to 12. And we have taken a somewhat formal approach to our study. We're addressing the 18 topics that were suggested for each study by writing a formal study plan. Each topic has some six sections in it, which are, the first is a scope, which is a general discussion of the topic and how we see it affecting us. The second is formal task statements to answer the questions posed by the scope paragraph. The third is set of deliverables, which basically constitute our report. The fourth is a list of interdependencies among the topics. The fifth is a schedule, and then finally, resources, which are where, who's going to work on what, basically. We've laid out a schedule and to finish by mid-May, and we started work on it, on task one. And at this point, I would say that given that we do leave the Leland and Gray Union, Lynn Hall would be very eager to merge school districts with us. Sandgate is, would be open to discussing merging with us, provided they decide to merge with, with other school districts themselves, they still haven't decided that. And I will find out what Stratton thinks this afternoon. So, and both Erica and myself will start working on canvassing schools in the immediate vicinity and see if they would be open to receiving our students on a choice basis. And if so, we, what are their capacities and the other conditions that might have. I would say of the 18 topics, the first one, which is what schools would accept our students as choice, the fourth, which is a survey of what opportunities are offered at a school for our students, and the tenth, which is what are the cost impacts, are going to be the tall holes in the tenth, and others are important but secondary to those. So that's our, that's our status right now.
Any questions?
So, if we went from section four, since those are pay per student, we would pay per student that went, because those are, I mean, you pay to Lynn Hall and pay to Stratton. So if we left, if we took that selection, then we would pay per student to go to those schools, correct? Or not correct?
That's right. We would pay the, well, it is up to the school board to pay tuition or compensate for tuition on either what they, the tuition that the receiving school charges, or a state average, or some other tuition that the school board might come up with. And there's a disparity among the different towns that we might join on what they would, what they do.
And they could raise the tuition at any time. They could raise what we had to pay to send a student there at any time, I would say, because it's a private institution.
That's right.
My question has to do with accepting all of our students. I would hope there would be some sort of a discussion or, or idea as to whether this is in perpetuity, no matter what, all of our students, no matter their condition, their needs, special needs, and that it would be a guaranteed forever thing, that they would always accept our students. Because we don't want to get into a situation where we, we, oh, it's all rosy the first five years, and then all of a sudden they, because they're private schools, they can make up their own rules and we can't vote on it, we can't have any say about it, it's handpicked, board of directors, so they can say, well, we're going to change the rules now, and this is going to be this, and this is going to be that, and this is how we're going to accept students. That, I would love to know before I would ever pick that choice, that that was going to be part of the deal.
I can't answer the question now. I assure you that constraints and, and conditions and guarantees are very much part of assessing each school's willingness to accept us.
Sue?
I have the same question.
Okay.
And I actually, we did, as a committee, everybody, we did meet with a special educator from another school just to hear, because that was a concern for us, is whether or not our specialized students would be accepted, no matter what. I believe we got a bit of an ambivalent response. I believe we got a bit of an ambivalent response, that it wasn't 100% for everybody. But that is a point that Patty brings up, is it may be that they accept us in the beginning and then things could change. We don't know that, obviously, but this question was brought up and we have been thinking about that.
Any other questions? CJ?
So, my understanding is this would be like other towns who now have high school choice. The town of Jamaica or who would decide on a per pupil tuition? And if you chose to send your child to a school that costs more than that, you would make up the difference?
Yes. We would be very similar to Lynn Hall.
Yes, that's, that's one example, right?
We would set tuition, the school board would set tuition.
Jamaica would?
Jamaica School Board would set tuition. Well, actually, it wouldn't be Jamaica, it would be Jamaica, Lynn Hall, and Stratton, whatever, all the towns that were together in that one school board would make the same decision for all the towns, that they would just do state average, or they would do state average up to whatever Vernburn's tuition is, or some variation of that.
So, if there's any variation from year to year, how much tuition is, isn't the individual towns put together and hold on it? The increases, the decreases, and so every year, there has to be this voting to approve that number?
I believe that it's, there's a general policy. So, for instance, Win- I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember the details of each town, how they do it, but let's say that Lynn Hall pays up to Vernburn tuition, that's their typical policy, then they would do that and they would probably have to re-vote every year the exact amount, whatever Vernburn's tuition is, but their general policy would stay the same until somebody decided to change. At one point, I think Lynn Hall was paying any tuition, however high, and they had to clearly, that's nuts, and they had, they had to have a new policy that said they were not going to do that, they pay up to Vernburn.
I believe one of the schools that they were providing tuition to was in Vernburn. So, I think they have since changed and have been a lot more, you know, citywide, rather than nationwide, or whatever.
Any other questions?
One more for the, is, all these four committees will have the same, and I know you don't have the consultants, so, but at least the same cost information as far as when we're comparing what exactly does it mean as far as dollar options to.
As much as we can, that's our goal. We'd really like to be able to have apples-to-apples comparison between all the committees. We're going to do our very best to make that happen, because I know it's kind of difficult for us to talk about it any other way.
And I think another issue with transportation is, you know, kind of secondary thinking as we go through the choice processes. I believe that the town then becomes involved in voting, you know, how we transport the kids, you know, and the cost, and so contracting out of, you know, a busing company. So, I, I think that's kind of the direction to go, trying to figure out how all these kids get to whatever schools they choose.
Any other questions?
I just had a comment, I just wanted to mention to everybody that we are, no matter what, we are pursuing, anyone on any of the committees are trying to make sure that we do have a vote as well on any of these boards that we're joining and that that's, that's very important for us as well, is to not relinquish any of that voting rights, because that is a possibility if we don't act within a certain time.
Actually, I'm sorry, I made a few confusing information at our last meeting. The, the loss of voting rights really isn't about once we have an actual district formed. It's about this, it's about during the process. So, for instance, as somebody mentioned, Floodbrook has already formed their study committee and they're moving forward with that. So, if we joined them, then during this time of, of the exploratory committee, we wouldn't be an advisory, we wouldn't have a vote in that process. But once the dis- if we decided to join them, once the district was formed, we would have a vote. The votes are, looks like they're going to be based by population. Does that make sense, Carolyn? So, it's, it's about?
Yeah, I just wanted everybody to have that. We are trying to make sure that we still have a key in whatever happens to our student committee.
And the only other thing that I would need to know is what is the difference in the tax base for all the other cities for, for if Jamaica's allowed to be counted? That's going to be pertinent. How much more they would have to pay to keep Leland Gray going if our students moved out? That's going to be the big issue I have a feeling.
Great.
Vote.
What is the deadline or end date when all of this needs to be done?
We're aiming for a July, that by July 2017, we will have voted as, to have the actual vote as a town for which direction we're going. You could take longer, but you, you lose more and more tax incentives as we take longer. I think the final date is 2019.
2019, yeah.
But we would very much like to get the next round of tax incentives, which would give us, yeah, July 2017.
And if we don't act by 2019, the board of education, is it the?
The State Board of Education will decide for us what we should do and we'll have penalties and no, no tax incentives.
Okay, just the stick. Any other questions? Thank you, group number four. So, I believe that gives you a pretty good idea where these four committees are going and what they're working on and what a hurt you mean to ask, it really is.
Yes, and please, like I said, we're definitely hoping for more members, so.
Come on aboard.
Please, um, either talk to us or just come to our meeting on March 10 at the school that's ever left.
And if you want any information that they were speaking of, there are handouts here that you can pick up when we break for lunch. All right, Nelson?
Thank you.
All right, so, I want to remind people, I, is there any other business to come before the school director's meeting?
Still doing our.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing other business still, yes?
Well, it's not really business, but it's a point of information. I know that many of you are familiar with the Journey's program, which is unique to Leland and Gray among all high schools in the state of Vermont. And I just want to let you know that three weeks from today, 16 students are from Leland and Gray, including two from Jamaica, Mariah Hazard and Rebecca Williams, at this point are going to be in the air on the way to chime for amongst as part of our, as part of our program. And many students from Leland and Gray, from Jamaica have participated in this program over the last 17 years since we started it, including, I would, I would venture to say probably 30 or 40 kids from Jamaica. So, thank you for your past support and we look forward to continuing the program and possibly having some of your students involved in the future. Thank you.
Is there any other business? I'd like to remind anybody who was voted in to a position, I believe you see Pam, to properly sign in, isn't that correct?
Uh, yeah, at the town office.
At the town office. So, just talk with her and she'll tell you the dance you danced. And so, let's move on to the Article 7 that I bumped down to the bottom, and that's to set a meeting time for next year's annual school district meeting. And I'll entertain a motion. Your motion?
Motion to set the time. I would say, I would think we want amendment to amend it to be directly following the town meeting as opposed to one clock.
Have a second? Very good, thank, very good. Any discussion? And next year, the school board meeting would come, we alternate years. So, some years we do the town first, then the school board, and then next year, we do school board and then town. So, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to close. Second? Very good. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So passed. Excellent. So, I will now just let you know that there's the town meeting lunch across the street for anybody who's interested. There's the Doyle poll, there's the information here, there's also some information that we'll be dealing with this afternoon's budget for the town. So, if anybody's interested in that, look at it. The polls are open, please vote. I will entertain a motion to close out the school board meeting for 2016. Very good. Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Your release.
What time do we meet back?
Oh, what time is it now?
It's 11:00.
Uh, one hour, or do you want to just save one o'clock? One o'clock. One o'clock back here for the town. Thank you.
Excuse me, the Jamaica Town Meeting will come to order. First on the agenda is to elect a moderator for the term of one year. Do we have a motion on the floor? Yes.
No, I have to get Greg Jolly.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor for Greg Jolly as being your?
You have to ask for more.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there any, I'm sorry. Are there any more, uh, nation armadillos? Hearing none. All in favor for Greg Jolly as your moderator for the town meeting for one year?
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing none, Greg Jolly's been dominated. Thank you.
Here we go. All right, so I'm just going to read the warning one more time, so we're all official. The voters of the town of Jamaica and the county of Wyndham and state of Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at 10 o'clock, which we've already started, town hall in the said town of Jamaica on the first Tuesday of March 1st, that's a double march there, I notice, 2016, to transact the following business and act upon the following articles. So, you've elected your moderator, I thank you again. I'm going to take a moment here, moderator's prerogative, and I'm going to ask Norma to just come forward very quickly and speak to an issue she'd like to address, and then we'll move on to the elections.
Hi, I'm Norma Drosky, I'm the pastor at the community church here, and also, I'm a member of a group called Community Partners. And this is a group of nonprofit agencies in our area. And what we do is we meet once a month to look at the needs of our area. And one need that has been glaring in our eyes for a year now is a need for more dental care, especially for our lower-income brothers and sisters. And so, we're proposing a two-pronged approach. One is to have an educator, dental hygienist in the schools to help the kids. The other one would be examination, cleaning, education, fluoride treatments and sealings, and referral to, for any other work. The problem we thought is that in the mountains, unless you have Dr. Dinosaur, doc, dentist right now, there's no one available. There's one person in Chester who takes Medicare, he's not taking new patients. One person in Ludlow, who is taking patients, but you got a four to six-month wait for an appointment, and there's no one in Man- in Manchester that takes Medicaid. So, the first step of this process in getting grants would be to have, to identify the problem. So, I've got a sign-in sheet and it just asks, have you gone to the dentist, do you have insurance, what time are you from, what date, when was the last time you had a dental appointment? And then we're going to compile the information and write grants. One of the ideas that has come up is to have a permanent place, maybe in Jamaica or Londonberry that's open all the time. And it would be staffed by student dental hygienists and student dentists, and, but they would be under the supervision of a licensed dentist. And the other one would be to have a trailer that would be moved around, maybe a week in Jamaica, a week in Wardsboro, a week up in Londonberry. And so, we're, we're looking at all the options right now, but the first step, as most people know when you're writing grants, is to be able to define the problem, how many people in our community do not have healthcare, and especially those of our lower-income brothers and sisters. So, I have one board here that we put up on the front, and there's also one board on the back table. So, please take a moment and just fill out the form so that we can get a good idea of what our needs are in the Jamaica area. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Okay, remember this, all this material up here, so people, keep it in mind when you have time to come up and take a look at this or sign at either end. Go to Article 2, is to hear the report of the professional auditors. Who addresses this?
We have a report from the professional auditors and it's in the book, in your town report, and also, there's a separate book if anybody wants, and it's at the town clerk's office. And it's also online, the town clerk sends to you emails. We should have missed, missed some down there too. Okay, all right, so some pages down here, if anybody wants.
What is it, Sullivan?
This one here?
Yeah.
Anybody's interested?
Sullivan and Powers?
Yes.
Is anybody interested?
Yes.
Okay, good. And that's a warning. All right, are good? Okay, let's go to Article 3 then. Uh, we need to elect the following officers as required by law. And the first one up is a select person for a term of three years, and this is by ballot. So, who is presently in that position?
Andy.
Andy is, and I will take nominee, nominations from the floor.
I'm Andy Coyne.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare nominations closed, and I'll just ask the body to vote for Andy Coyne to fill in that three-year position. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Andy.
Now, we'll move on to the next position. This is a select board person for a term of one year. And who is that position for?
Paul Frazier.
Paul Frazier is presently finishing out his term. Do I hear nominations for this one-year position?
Paul Frazier.
Paul Frazier from CJ. Have a second on that?
Second.
Very good, Brandon. All right. Any other nominations to come? Forward. Hearing none, I'll declare nominations closed, and I'll ask the body, all those in favor of Paul Frazier filling in for one-year position on the select board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. Congratulations, Paul. Moving right along here. Select person for a term of one year, who's this?
Lou Brusso.
Lou Brusso is presently finishing out this term, and I will entertain motion for the filling of the next one-year term.
Nominate Lou Brusso.
All right, nominates Lou Brusso. Seconded. Are there any other nominations for this one-year position? All right, hearing none, closed nominations, and I'll ask the body to affirm that you want Lou Brusso for this one-year position on your select board. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Lou. Next is a lister for a term of three years. Who's presently in that position?
Ed Dordt Duke is filling out, filling out the term.
Oh, okay, so Ed Dordt Duke is filling out the term presently, and it's finished, and so we are now looking for a lister for a term of three years, and do I have a nomination?
I nominate Ed Dordt Duke.
All right, can I have a second on that? Mr. Jay? Very good. Any other nominations for the position of lister for three years? Hearing none, I'll close nominations and I'll ask the body to vote for Mr. Dordt Duke as your lister for three years. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Congratulations, all. Next is the first constable for a term of one year, and that's Rob Willis. Rob Willis is presently serving out, finishing his term, and I will entertain a motion to fill the next one-year term for this position. Who will make a motion?
I nominate Lou.
Rob Willis. Rob Willis has been nominated, seconded. Okay. Any other nominations for the position of constable, first constable? Hearing none, I'll declare nominations closed. All in favor of Rob Willis being your first constable, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Rob is for one year, your first constable. The second constable for a term of one year.
Stuart Parker.
Stuart Parker is presently finishing out his term, and I will entertain a motion for the next one-year term as second constable.
Stuart Parker. I nominate Stuart Parker.
Good. And second, Craig Klein.
Craig Klein.
We have a cat in the distillery now. To ask for another nomination as second constable.
Chrissy Berger.
No.
I need him quicker this time. Very good. Second constable is now out of the family. I will entertain the next generation. Who would like to put a nomination up for second constable? Any nominations?
I nominate Ben Williams.
I nominate Ben Williams.
Andy Coyne has nominated Ben Williams. Ben?
Ben's denying, he's heard that.
Right, is there a second?
I think he's got him.
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Any other people who want to be nominated for second constable? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. I'll ask the group if they want Ben Williams to be your second constable. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Last chance.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ben. Put him as the second constable. The next is town grand juror for a term of one year, and that is...
Steven Clark.
Steven Clark presently, uh, holds the position, and I think has held it since the days of Manthusa. So, um, I'll have a motion for who will serve as your town, uh, grand juror.
Steve Clark.
Steve Clark. Very good. Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close out nominations, and I'll ask for the perfect vote, uh, Steven Clark being your grand juror. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? He continues his reign. Town agent for a term of one year. That presently is Peter Andrews, and I'll, uh, open it up for a nomination. Who would like to nominate for the position of town agent?
I nominate Peter Andrews.
Peter Andrews? Second?
Second.
Second? Peter's not here to speak for himself.
That's what happened.
So, any other nominations? I'll quickly close the nominations. All in favor of Peter Andrews being your town agent, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent, thank you. Peter Andrews has been elected.
I don't think I can stand old Tom Bruce.
Don't you wanna get up and vote at some point? Let's get a ballot here. Okay, next one up is trustee for public funds for the term of one year.
Also Steven Clark.
That's also Steven Clark, so I will entertain a motion for somebody to be the trustee of public funds for the term of one year. Any nominations?
I nominate Steve Clark.
Steven Clark's been nominated. Second?
Second.
Yeah. Close. Alright, so, any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. All in favor of Steven Clark being your, uh, trustee of public funds, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Steven wins again. And then we come down to the trustee, uh, library trustee for a term of five years.
Dieter Land.
Wait a minute? Oh, sorry. It's... Oh, you guys are quick. I let him in the state, you're all awake. Good. Agent of Dieter Land for the term of one year, that is...
Pat Newmans.
Pat Newmans is presently finishing out her term. Do I hear any nominations for this position? Pardon? That's voting. Any nomination? I nominate Pat. Uh, Pat isn't here. I guess that's the same situation as Steve. Uh, second?
Second.
Second? Alright, all closed nominations, unless there's another one?
I nominate Pam Tweedy.
Okay, we have another nomination.
Second.
Okay, we got the second. So now, you have to fill out little pieces of paper and vote between Pam or Pat. Oh, you want it? Are there seven people here who want to do it by written ballot? Good. Okay, well, you do it by voice ballot. All those in favor of Pat Melman, raise your hand.
What, what was the question?
Uh, this is for Pat Melman or Pam Tweedy for the position of agent of Dieter Land.
Who are you calling for first?
Pat Melman. So all those in favor of Pat Melman, please raise your hand.
I've got one there.
Oh, alright. Eleven? Okay, eleven. Now then, for Pam Tweedy, hands up for her.
Woo!
I think we can safely say that Pam has won the day. Congratulations, Pam. Alright, now we can move on to the library trustee for a term of five years. Presently, Ed Dorde Duke is closing out her five-year term, and so I will entertain a motion for director of the library for five years. Any nominations?
I nominate Jennifer Dorde Duke.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. All in favor of Jennifer Dorde Duke is serving for your library trustee for five years, please say aye?
Aye.
No? Abstentions? She's back on. And I'd also like to let people, remind people that the position of surveyor of wood lumber and wearer of coal is open, so if you feel so, just, if you want a classic Vermont position, which really has no responsibilities or point, it's still in the town report, approach the select board, and I'm sure they'll be able to help you. Alright, let's move on to the fourth article. Should the voters authorize the transfer of the prior year revenue surplus of $31,410 to the highway reserve fund? Do I have a motion on the floor? Second?
Second.
Very good. Alright, any discussion? Somebody like to do, address this, or are there any questions?
I have a question. Um, when you say to the highway reserve fund, do you mean the equipment or the roads themselves, and bridges?
Yeah, we're talking about the road, the road reserve fund.
Just, just so you understand what happens, is every year you vote a certain amount of
money for the select board to, uh, spend on behalf of, of the town. Whenever our revenues exceed that amount, we have to get you to personally, to as a group, vote for that excess number. That's what you're doing. And our recommendation is to put it into the, uh, highway fund. We're doing, uh, some capital improvement surveying work right now to decide, uh, what projects are, are gonna be necessary in the future for us. We're looking at about a ten-year horizon, and it looks like there are gonna be a fair amount of large culverts that are gonna need to be repaired in the last, next ten years or so, so we thought we'd move this money into the highway reserve fund, which covers culverts, bridges, and roads. Good. Any other questions?
Would you want to update your, if your estimate will happen in that highway reserve fund? Because I just think you already have the, the food bridge and all that from out there. We actually have there.
She's researching.
Right now, it's got 279,000, and it's so we add that, we'll have...
But is that, we haven't taken out, like, the food bridge and all of those?
That is not taking out the food bridge, you have to repay that.
But that, does that, that has to come out of here, right?
It does. If you decided that's where you want it to come out of, I mean, it came out of the highway when we paid it this year, so it will have to come out of there at some point.
So then, actually, you really only have 279,000?
Correct. That plus whatever in the budget.
Any other questions? Alright. Hearing none?
Uh, yeah, Rob. Can you allocate some of that money towards helping out with the, uh, new garage?
I don't think I can ask the board.
Yeah, you, uh, the town, only town meetings can determine where, I think, some of those funds can go. So it's possible that if we had a warrant and a meeting, that you could reallocate that money, but I don't think I'd, I'd recommend that. At least not, not in the short period. Because, because we do have, as I said, we're accumulating this group of culverts that were actually damaged during Irene, but have been put back, but are gonna need replacing. So I think we wanna, we wanna start building that highway reserve fund up to, uh, for that, for that.
Alright, any other?
Can you just make sure everybody heard that?
Basically, what Lou was saying, that, uh, Rob asked the question, could this money be moved towards the building, uh, possible building of the new town garage? And Lou was suggesting that there were culverts that were, uh, damaged in, uh, Irene that need to be replaced within the next ten years, and that's what the board is looking towards, and that if Rob's suggestion was to go into effect, it would have to come back to the town in a meeting to be voted on by the voters. I think that's the condensing what you said. Alright, any other questions on this issue? Seeing none, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to close discussion.
Oh wait, sorry, I got a question unrelated, just...
Okay.
Um, we're trying to find it on the town report, but it's not. The highway capital fund is not broken down.
Highway capital fund?
On one of the schedules, is there a page?
Thirteen. Seven hundred and thirty.
Thank you.
It's the, uh, is it highway capital fund? Yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Does that answer the question? Good. Any other questions? I'll ask again for somebody to make a motion to close out the discussion. Second?
Second.
Second? Very good, so we'll move the question. Uh, the question is, shall the voters authorize the transfer of the prior year revenue surplus of $31,410 to the highway reserve fund? All those in favor of so doing, please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, go pass. Article 5, to see what sum of money the voters will vote to pay the town's running expenses and how it will be collected.
The amount is $940,171.50. That is on page 27 at the top. The right-hand top.
940, you said, right?
You also gonna have to have your, these are the paid receipts, but you have to have authority to vote all your money and how it's to be collected.
Is that the thing to do now? More people shuffling, just be patient with us. Maybe while you're looking that up, we can address the issue of how it will be collected. How does the select board suggest this be collected? Uh, I thought we'd just move on for the moment to the question of how you wish it to be collected. That's the second part. There's two parts here, so let's...
Okay. So the money will be collected by taxes due on or before October 3rd?
2016.
2016.
Okay, that gives us that half.
With, uh, what was the penalty?
Eight percent? Eight percent penalty for being overdue. Alright, half done.
She's a revenue, they're 228,550. Taxes raised with the 940, 171.50.
Alright, did people get that, or shall I repeat?
Peter paid it.
Alright, so from revenues, there would be 228,550. From taxes, it would be 940,171.50, and making a total of 1,168,721.50. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the 940 would be raised by taxes.
And the 940 would be raised by taxes.
Both of the figures you mentioned ended with 50 cents in your total of 50 cents. Something doesn't make sense.
No, uh, the first, the revenue was 228,550.
No.
Dot, zero, zero. Okay, so the 50 is from the tax side of things. Alright, so, those are the numbers. Any other questions?
A while back, um, there was a, uh, not a policy, I guess it is a policy, to make sure that all the voted appropriations have a specific report from each one of the services. Was that provided, and is that available that we can read it? Because it used to be part of the town report, and it isn't. On page, on page 30, all those voted appropriations, or to-be-voted appropriations, I guess you should say.
They are available at the town office.
But the, the select board reviewed them all, and all the numbers added up?
Yes, as they come in, we review them, we decided not to put them in the town report. So they are available at the town clerk's office if anybody wants to see them like that. For every single one.
They're also on page 30, halfway down.
No, I, yeah, but they usually get reports.
I remember that.
Correct. How much they spent, and how the balance of Jamaica was.
Okay.
Great. For every single one.
We used to have some of the most elongated discussions here in this group.
Right.
Over $200 for the cat.
I missed them, so...
I'm sorry. I think Mary was next, and Elaine.
My question is, if the bond passes, um, is that gonna affect, uh, the amount of money that we owe for next year? Is that, am I supposed to ask now?
No.
Okay, that's the end. Thank you.
Uh, Elaine?
I had a question, please, just regarding the, the voted allocations, the town meeting appropriations, and the Old Home Day expense is over in Ms. Lay's expenses. Does that mean we never voted it as a requested, request for funds? I think we added it to the budget. Well, that's what, that's what it looks like, and that's why I'm questioning it.
I don't, I don't think it got asked for last year, but the board did, uh, decide afterwards to give them the money.
Well, yeah, the town decided at town meeting last year, because the Old Home Committee had not got their request in, so the town supported it at town meeting.
I, I'm bringing this up in part because it's a very generous amount of money, and, um, and if you, if you look at the voted appropriations, I think the only, uh, organization that comes anywhere that exceeds that amount is the visiting nurse service, which certainly deserves every nickel that we give them. And I guess I'm, I'm, I have a feeling that I'd like to see Old Home Day over in that voted appropriation list, and I kind of feel, and I, and I'm, this is a very personal thing, and I, I don't want anyone to get mad at me, but I think it's great to give Old Home Day, you know, $2,500, seed money to get going, but when I look at their report, um, I think they could be doing a lot more work to be self-sustaining. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Sure.
I was looking at the highway budget, wondering if there is any money set aside for permitting and planning on the new building, or debt service on the bond? Is that in the budget at all?
The way, the way the bond works is that you can't put it in your budget unless it's actually voted in. If the voters do indeed vote the budget that, the, the bond in, then that becomes an automatic increase in your budget, similar to if we added more into it today. However, if bond vote does get, uh, approved, we don't pay principal on it for another year, so we'd only have to service the interest once we took it out for that first year. So whatever impact on this year's budget would be very minimal.
We have an estimate as to whether we study permitting engineering and interest costs would be...
Well, I think it's important to this discussion as part of the budget because that's what we're going to be paying for in taxes at the end of the year. If it's not included in this budget, where's that money going to come from?
I guess I, I missed, can you repeat that second part of the question?
So if the town plan on spending money on engineering, studying, and interest for a bond, and it does not show up in this as a budget line, where's that money going to come from?
It would, it would increase, it would be like any other appropriation that we made today after this particular budget, it would increase our budget accordingly. So it would probably come out of taxes.
So we should anticipate an unknown increase in our municipal taxes after voting on this?
I have to be careful what I can say. We're not supposed to legally discuss the bond issue in this meeting, so I have to be careful what I, what we say.
Okay.
But generally, what would happen is that increase would automatically get added to the, to the budget.
But not to this budget?
Would be added to this budget. The only, the interest portion that I talked about. So for example, if we, if we took out a loan for that first year, we'd only have to pay the interest on that loan from the point that we actually took the loan out. For example, we wouldn't be taking the loan out until August or September or October or something like that. So we'd pay the interest beginning there until the next fiscal year would start. It would be in the range of about, I think, $5,000, something like that. I'm gonna go to Dave here and then I'll come back to you.
Well, I'm, I'm just following from Drew's line, questioning is, if there's expenses related to town garage in fiscal year 2017, which is what we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the money to pay those expenses coming from?
I, I answer the business, I can. It becomes an automatic increase to our budget. And the part of the budget of the, the revenue side that would increase would be tax, taxes.
I, I think what they're thinking is, we're going to just say, okay, we're going to take $30,000 and add it to this budget without being included by the taxes.
Are you talking about things like?
Is that what you're thinking?
Like engineering expenses and stuff?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to stay within the bounds of what I can understand now. We, we have a, we have, we have some reserve funds that we would probably use. Can we keep it down, please, so that we can hear?
You have some reserve fund.
We would probably take it out of the building reserve fund.
Okay.
We wouldn't add to the budget.
Right.
We wouldn't add to the budget once it's been...
Is that your question? Yeah, I think we finally circled around to the, the meat of the issue set. Address, what you were speaking to? Drew?
Yeah, 'cause I'm just looking at what the total engineering cost, and realistically, engineering planning cost could be six figures on this project, which would be a 10% change in our, our operating budget this year alone. And I just want to see us approving $900,000 and spending, you know, 1.1 million by the time we're done with engineering.
That's, that's not how it's going to work. We're not going to add, once this budget's been approved, we're not going to add another million dollars for it. Or whatever.
Okay.
So it'll come out of the, uh...
Reserve.
Building reserve fund. Building reserve fund for any engineering or design work and things like that, money that we already have in our accounts. We won't be adding to the budget.
So this is the budget you're going, we're going to vote on?
That's it.
Is the bottom line for this year for the taxes? Okay.
On the first line of tax collections, you expect...
Page?
Page twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
On the, uh, the eighty-seven thousand, you're expecting to collect an additional seventy thousand in taxes. Brings it up to nine hundred and forty-one seventy-one. Where do you expect to get these from reassessing the town assets or the houses or by this increase? How do you expect to get that?
We're on page twenty-seven, the top there, it's the tax revenues, correct? Yeah. Uh, top line, page twenty-seven.
Seventy-seven to nine forty.
Right. And what's the question?
How do you, where do you expect these taxes to come from? From the reassessment of the homes?
No, the reassessment, that, the reassessment won't be finished till nineteen, till 2018. So none of this will be affected by the reassessment.
But where, where is this money coming from?
By the, by the actual rate.
The tax rate would go up.
The tax rate will come up.
Okay. Whoever wants to talk.
This is a whole nother sentence, and I think it comes under this, but I'm not sure. On page fifty-two, the sheriff's report. We were, they issued a total of 244 tickets. As anyone who lives in town knows, I walk all the time, and the people that fly through this town is unbelievable. It says, under Vermont law, the town could receive up to $21,724.80 in fund disbursement. It says could, and then I tried and I couldn't find that money in. I'm just curious how much we actually did collect from them and what goes to them.
And you found that out, and the answer is on what page?
Uh, page twenty-seven, under revenue.
Yep.
Traffic fine.
And what was collected?
Uh, actual collected in 2015 was fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine. Anticipated for this year is almost $6,000. In the budget we're talking about right now, it's fifteen thousand dollars, anticipated traffic fine.
All right. Everybody know where we are? And so the question?
Yep. I have one quick question.
Sure.
Same page twenty-seven, on the first part of expenses. It doesn't appear that there's any money in the budget for the town clerk or town treasurer.
You thought on the expense side?
Yeah, on the expense side.
Bottom of the page. Town office salary, the fifty-two thousand.
Right. This is right below it.
Okay. They've just been added together.
People hear that?
Yeah.
Those two positions were, uh, next line down, where the two positions were just a total amount, as opposed to being split out. So that is what, the fifty-two thousand three hundred?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, any other questions?
Is there, is there a line item here? Is there a checkbook balance, and where would I find it?
Checkbook balance?
I think it's...
There is. Research is going on. Be virtually.
It is on page thirteen.
Page thirteen?
Seventy-one thousand, seven, seven, seven.
Seventy-one thousand, seven, seven, seven is the number?
Bottom left.
Bottom left? Bottom line? Literally bottom line.
Auditors call it a fund balance, we call it a checking balance.
The auditors call it a fund balance, and the town calls it a checking balance. A matter of terminologies.
This is a comment or advisement, but maybe whatever we did to save money making this report, we put back, so there's a little more, so we don't have all these questions and everybody got a good idea before they walk into this meeting what's going on. I mean, you guys are shuffling through papers, trying to find figures that should already be in the report, we just come in and get this done by noon. I mean, I'm willing to put a little more money in my taxes to pay for a more complete report. Line item, itemized, printed out. I'm, I'm sorry, it's just, I mean, people are asking questions.
Any other questions? Comments? Observations?
Well, no more. Not that I don't appreciate the sheriff pulling people over, but it went from 25,000 to 43,000.
Because a lot of folks in town have asked us over the years, how come the sheriff's department isn't here more often than they are? So the revenue that we received back from the sheriff's department, from the fines, we researched it and decided to try for one year to up the hours. If it doesn't work out for some reason or other, or the townspeople aren't happy with it, or we're not happy with the funding that's coming back from them, the receipts that we get from them, then we can go back to the less hours. Having them here more, top, more hours is beneficial for the town, for the, everybody, not just for the speeding tickets, but to have them come here and be here.
I wasn't sure if it was just more hours or just more money with same.
No, no, it's more hours. We went from forty-two hours to eighty hours, I believe.
All right. Any other? Bonnie?
I would like, I've requested this for every year, we got it on this piece of paper, but I would like to have the statement of our taxes billed and accounted for because I don't, when you look in this town report, you do not see the amount of money that we send to the state in education. The town has, the, the state dictates to the town, you've got to build it, you've got to collect it, and they even tell you what you've got to send them. And we sent them here last year, a hundred, um, one million, four hundred and fourteen dollars and some odd cents, and that is more than our town budget or our, either of our two school budgets. But I think we need to know this, and we need to talk to Oliver or whoever our representative is and complain, because the squeaky wheel is one against the oil, and we say nothing or just sit back, or we don't know, it's out of sight, out of mind, nothing ever changes. And I think it's ridiculous that we send almost a million and a half dollars to the state when we're struggling to keep our schools open.
I think the board hears that and has the same frustrations. Any other questions? Observations? I'll entertain a motion to close out the discussion portion of this article. Is there a motion on the floor? No, then you want to talk about it more? That's your choice. Brady? Second? Okay. Very good. So we're moving to question number five. To see what sum, the sum has been stated as $1,168,721.50. Will, uh, will be voted by the voters to pay for the town's running expenses, and it will be collected by taxes, correct? I will take a motion to move this article.
So move.
Second? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Before you, discussion after the second.
Uh, do you want to discuss it some more?
I'd like to make a comment.
Ah, Paul would like to.
When you, when you read it as some will vote to pay the town running expenses and how it will be collected, and we say by taxes, it's by taxes and revenues.
Taxes and revenues. So noted. Therefore, restating the article, to see what sum of money the voters will vote to pay the town's running expenses, that expense being $1,168,721.50, and to be collected by taxes and revenue. That is how the article now stands, correct? Very good. I will entertain a motion on this article.
So move again.
Ed moves it? Second? Oh, we got one back there. All right, one in the back row. Excellent. So we now move, you remove the article, and what is your voting pleasure on number five? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Any objections? Number five is passed. Thank you for your patience. That moves us on to number six. To see if the voters will authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on this article? Or any clarification from the board? Any questions? Hearing none? I will hazard a guess, we'll close out discussion. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Therefore, I am now going to ask to see if the voters will authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Obstentions? Thank you. So pass. Number six is history. Number seven. Shall the voters authorize the select board to spend, quote, "unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and/or interest"? Do I have a motion on the floor?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions? Observations?
Nope.
Select board? Whoever holds your peace? All right, I will entertain a motion to close out discussion. Good? Second? I think I've added a step, but what the heck?
Yeah.
So, all those in favor of article number seven, shall the voters authorize the select board to spend unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and/or interest? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Thank you. Pass. Number seven. No? I just passed number seven. Slow. I know you want to be out of here.
Yeah.
Rather put an hour time limit on me, so I'm working as quick as I can here.
We appreciate it.
Shall the voters exempt the Jamaica Volunteer Fire and Rescue Inc. land and building from taxation for a period of five years as provided in Title 32, Section 3840 of the VSA? I believe that's the Vermont State.
Statute.
Thank you. Vermont State statutes. All right. So, a motion on the floor?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Discussion on this article. Drew?
I'm sorry, I just heard noise over here. Were you restating the case? Is that school tax and municipal tax?
All taxed.
Which just says from taxation.
Yes. School tax and municipal tax.
So it is, I believe, fire and son for your question. Any other questions on this article? Hearing none? Close out discussion and ask for somebody who moved that, shall the voters exempt Jamaica Volunteer Fire and Rescue Inc. land and building from taxation for a period of five years as provided in Title 32, Section 3840 of the VSA? Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Uh, here we go. All those in favor of article eight, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stated? So move. Eight is history. All right. I'm going to do a little flip around here before we get on to the last two. And that is something that is usually called other business, so I am going to ask, is there other business to transact before this body, before we move on to setting time for next year and adjournment? Is there any other business to come before this body? Okay, you were first.
Well, it's just a thank you to the town. It's been a long time coming, but the Gudafell Bridge is open. I like it.
And also like to thank the town. We have running water in the bathroom.
I have to say, it has been a delight to sit in this seat and watch people.
I'd like to thank the town for this fine public service they provide.
Very good.
And there are any way of, next, next time we have a ballot here in the back here to do something, that's worth to be in the casino here.
Very glad that you're having a good time.
Very good. Standing under advisement, thank you.
Wouldn't it be appropriate at some point to begin the discussion of the town garage?
This is the time of other business, if you wish to bring it up.
Okay, then I'm bringing it up. There's a lot of background conversation about town garage. The town hasn't actually discussed the town garage. And I don't, I don't know how to begin a discussion, but I'm suggesting that it be begun.
Okay, some folks here want to respond, so let's start with this. Let's go.
I think a question rather than a discussion is...
Well, the question was, is concerned that the town hasn't discussed?
We had two...
Just speak up.
We had two public hearings. And so now, but you can ask questions, but we can't have another discussion about it. But you can ask questions, which obviously will be a discussion.
Okay.
But questions can be answered, asked and answered.
Okay, so my first question would be, what's the anticipation of the need and the cost and the value of building a town garage? what's the anticipation of the need and the cost and the value of building a town garage?
Would you review something?
What's the anticipation of the need and the cost and the means of building a town garage?
Well, the need of the garage, you went to the, you, did you go to the site? Have you been inside the garage? Okay, so that, that says it all there. The cost, we decided to go with bond vote to see if the people will let us go through with the paperwork to find out how much it'll cost and, and things like that. So we didn't hire a designer at a cost of thirty to fifty thousand dollars.
We needed hiring.
We did not hire a designer. Mr. Cotton was there just to give us information if he needed it, because he had done the Wilmington Garage and the Win Hall Garage. Keith Hazard, our road foreman, who and his fellow workers have to work in that garage. They went around to the different garages, I believe it was five of them, did a lot of research on what is needed, what isn't needed. And the cost is going to be, we'll have, we'll bring it up to the voters again as, not to vote on it, but to have the town, we'll show you what we're doing. Every step of the way, we'll show you what we're doing, the plans, what is going to cost for each plumbing, electricity, or whatever, the building, what we're going to use, so that the town will be informed. We don't want to just put up a two-by-four building that they have to stay in. We would try to, I believe everybody would want to put something there that's going to last a long time, and so it would be big enough for all the equipment and, and last for quite a while. Does anybody else have a question?
Well, this is a health and safety issue. We have three men who are keeping our roads basically passable. We're working in conditions that are pretty appalling. We're thinking safety and health. We want to be able to keep the roads open. We want to be able to have these guys continue to work for some time. And this is a real concern about patching it up as being more expensive, and then we're ending up with an old patched-up building, as opposed to doing it right. The building hasn't been touched, I think we've discussed it in twenty-eight or forty years, depending on who we're talking to.
Forty.
The, it's way overdue. And we just need, we have to make the decision and do it. I mean, we can put it off for another twenty years. We've been discussing this now for about a year. And it's been open in the meetings, and we thought we pretty much made our information available to everyone, but it's, it's time to do something and to do it correctly.
So wouldn't it be appropriate then to resolve to allocate a certain amount of money to begin the planning process, rather than allocating money to do the whole progress?
We're talking about a no greater than amount. To get the discussion started, so the people of Jamaica understand that this could go up to that amount, we're certainly going to try. We've been pretty successful at fairly parsimonious treasurer here.
That begs my question. My question is, would it be appropriate then to allow a certain amount of funds, since everybody seems to agree that we need a town garage, to investigate the costs and present several plans of design that would accommodate? Not a lot of money. But either way, you're going to have to have plans.
We're going to have to have plans. We do have to have plans.
Well, if you could have done what the fire department did. It would've been nice, come here with designs and blueprints and whatnot, rather than just saying we want money.
Okay, let me just point out, we had a discussion earlier about where those money for engineering's got to come from. Our thought as a board was to, rather than come to the voters and say, let's take some, let's allocate some money for engineering, instead, we would come up with a not-to-exceed proposal so that when the time came to, to spend money on engineering, it could become part of the bond. As we're seeing now, if, if this vote doesn't pass, then we have to spend money out of our reserve account or out of our general fund in order to pay for these engineering. So our, the whole idea of the approach we took was to be able to take the engineering money and put it in as part of the bond vote, as opposed to pay for it out of our reserve accounts or general fund. So that's the reason we took the tack that we did. And we have somebody back? We have somebody back here?
Yeah, I'm sorry I came in late because I was cleaning up from your lunch. I have to be, I haven't seen inside of the town hall, I've seen the auto town hall, the maintenance garage, and what I can see in maintenance in this town, what you need, you need a new facility. I heard the number, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Well, and they thought that was ridiculous. But if you look at building costs today, I don't think that's out of line at all for having a nice, big maintenance garage. It sounds like a lot of money. How you come up with getting that money, I, I don't, I haven't been in on that discussion.
I think we have to be careful of our actions.
Yeah, we're, yeah, I think we are.
I think there's a.
It seems to be out of order.
Well, no.
We have bond vote, it's going until seven o'clock.
Correct.
We have to make their choice based on things that were said before today.
No. No, in state law, this issue can come up under other business. It cannot be changed. It cannot be amended. We can only discuss, and there can be no floor vote, but it can be discussed.
People can put judgment calls out there that.
That is discussion. That is discussion. As I understand it, from who I talked to at the League City and some towns, this is discussion. I've heard people speak against the building, and now we've heard people speak for the building. It seems like we're getting balanced discussion. The beauty of the ballot box is that it is secret. You folks all have to make up your own mind in the ballot box. If you haven't voted yet, this is providing you more information to make your decision. That is how I, as the moderator, can read the situation.
But have you opened it up for discussion?
We are open for discussion right now. We are, we're talking about it. So what I'd like to do is, I'm trying to go around and talk to, have people talk, so we can get around, and then for second time around, I believe, Ben, you were next, Clara had her, and I believe somebody up here wanted to speak.
I just said that it was electionary.
Well, that's how I'm reading it. If the, if the group feels that I'm out of order, you can vote me out of order and shut it down. That is your decision. I'm only here to moderate. So how, how would you like to proceed? Would we like to go to Mr. Williams? Ben?
I'd like to make a motion that the discussion be closed.
No, if there's a second to that.
Second. Because it's, it's no different than having Donald Trump standing up there saying, "Vote for me."
One of the other secrets, anytime you're in a town meeting, any, if something comes up on the floor for discussion, somebody can immediately get up and say, "I vote that we shut down discussion." I have to get a second. If you vote for it, there's no discussion. You have the power. I'm only helping you through the process. Ben has moved that the discussion be closed. There's a second. I will now call that the discussion be closed. All those in this group are in favor of discussion being closed. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those who disagree, please say no.
No.
All right, I'm going to have to ask for a hand vote, please. All right, all those in favor of discussion being closed, please raise your hand. What do you have? Thirty? All right. All those in favor to not shut down discussion, please say no. This is a no vote. You don't want to shut down discussion. You don't want to shut down discussion.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hands, please. There we go. The affirmative to shut down the discussion was thirty. Those who wish not to shut down discussion was eighteen. Discussion is closed on this issue. Is there any other business to come before the meeting?
Well, I have a comment, and it has to do with, we were told at an open meeting that we could not discuss this. So there are people here who came prepared not to discuss this, and then we're told when we get here, and we were told by the select board that there would be no discussion. And now we're told we can discuss it. So I think that really unbalanced the whole thing. I mean, that, you know, that, that's what we were told. We told it was a law, that we could not discuss it here at town meeting. So there are people who are not here who might have wanted to discuss it, but we were told at an open meeting that we could not.
I believe, I believe, I thought we could not discuss.
Of course.
I went to the town meeting moderator's refresher course.
I agree, but we were told at a meeting that we could not.
This will not happen again. That's what I can say.
That's what you told?
That's what they understood. Just as I have come with another understanding.
I mean, I would love to talk through.
Right.
I would too, but I just, I just feel it's unfair to the people who are not here who thought maybe they could discuss it and cannot.
Paul?
Is there a possibility of scheduling a special meeting so that it doesn't conflict with the ballot?
What kind of special meeting?
To specifically discuss this issue well-publicized, well-known?
Depends how you vote.
Vote, vote to determine what happens next.
Well, we still want to know what would.
We will, after the vote, we can have a discussion. We can have an informational hearing. We can have an informational hearing. Not a special meeting, but it'd be an informational hearing.
I think that would be up for the select board to schedule the hearing.
I think, I think it really doesn't matter, because whether, whether the bond vote is successful or not, we want to continue the discussion publicly, so.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't decide that in a regard?
No, but we, at our next board meeting.
The day.
We'll probably deal with that. And when is your next board meeting?
Next, a week, next Monday.
No, it's in two weeks. Second Monday, which is Gibson.
Oh, that's right, two weeks.
They hear through to the office.
Thirteenth, is it the thirteenth?
Second Monday of the month.
Okay, the second Monday of the month, they will have a meeting. If you're interested in this for more information and making sure the public information meeting happens, but they can come and talk here about the issue.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen. All right, so, true.
I'd like to make a motion that the select board schedule a one-town meeting prior to taking action on a new town garage, regardless of the way the vote comes out. Then another town meeting be scheduled specifically for that purpose before action is taken.
Second? All right. What happens here is that this is known as other business. Other business is non-binding. We can take a vote, but it will only be a straw poll. It will not be binding for the select board. Though in spirit, I think they will follow it. But I want you to understand what you're doing. It's only a straw poll.
Just to add that, that is fully our intent. It's been unclear in the conversation. Our intent is to say that it's a cap of seven fifty. We're not asking you to write us a check. We're not asking you to decide whether it's going to be sticks or metal. We just want to go ahead, start spending the money on investigating. We are clearly going to have to have town-wide interest and involvement, regardless of the vote today. So we are going to do exactly what you want us to do. We've been, that's been in the plans, it's just hasn't been getting the publicity that the large number has.
Okay, but still, Drew's motion is on the floor, and it was second. So now, I'm going to call for discussion. Do people agree with what Drew has presented as a motion? Remember, you can call a question right now, or you can go into discussion. It's your call.
I have called a question.
Question has been called. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. Now, Drew, will you state your motion?
The select board hold a town meeting prior to action on the town garage.
Very good.
Awarded town. Can you clarify, acting on it or awarding it? Acting on it, before making a decision. But our action is to investigate. So there's a lot of work to be done before we can even present anything to the town. So could we make that an award versus an acting? Because we got actions we've got to do anyway. Follow me? I would like to see the town meeting prior to the decisions being made. So if you've already gotten to the point where you've made the decision, then it's too late for town input. That's, that's fair. The decision-making process can be delayed pending the actions that we have to do to get to that point. I can live with that.
Can or must?
I would like my motion to say, a forum that we can have the discussion that is not today, so that everybody in the room can show up at a town meeting and have a discussion about this town garage. Not after the plan is done, not after we spent the money, but during the process.
Does the body understand the motion?
Yes.
I am going to call it, and I'm going to ask, and you've been seconded. Now I'm going to close out discussion if that's agreeable to people. Who will close discussion? Is there a motion for that? Seconded?
Second.
Very good. All right, now, I want to vote. All those in favor of Drew's amendment in the affirmative, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Abstentions? Two abstentions. Three, four, five. Very good. And that is the count. The motion passes. The select board will take it under advisement for actual action. Any other business to come before the body? Yes.
I make a motion to amend the vital statistics on page sixty-four.
Vital statistics, page sixty-four? How would you like them amended?
I have a baby for any of these people. It's not, um.
You have a baby?
That's Ben.
She didn't want to be a baby.
I believe if you go to the town authorities, we will have it so amended. Very good. Any other business to come before the body? Claire? Oh, please, we're almost there, folks, we're almost there, please. Claire?
Okay, a question I have is about the website that we do not have, the town website. I, I emailed Oliver, he told me to ask the select board, and therefore I'm asking the select board. We are the only member town that he covers that does not have its own website. And to get out information such as what we've been doing here today would be very helpful. I realize that we're being filmed, but not everybody accesses this. Nice, it's nicely done, but it doesn't happen with everybody, and I really think we need to address the website. And I was asked, I was told to look at Lou, so, I'm sorry.
The website is, is ready to activate at any time. It's just a matter of deciding whether to activate it or not. I've upgraded it so that it's the latest version of the software.
There's a lot of things that have to be done. Any, like the planning commission. No, 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 but in order for us legally, everybody that has a committee, whether it be Historical Society, Planning Commission, Select Board, any organization library, they have to put their agenda on there. They have to put their minutes within five days. You know, so that's the legality part of it. If somebody is willing to do all that and get everything up quickly, you know, we can, we can open it up.
I think one of the concerns is that we have so many committees that receive money from the town that have to follow open meeting law, that the town becomes responsible if they don't. So my proposal would be that if an organization receives money from the town and doesn't follow the rules that would be set, that they would lose that funding. Because we can't subject ourselves to being sued or fined.
How has Longberry and Weston, and how did the rest of the places, did somebody, how did they?
Can you address this directly with Lou? Because you seem to have very specific questions.
I definitely wanted to ask about the other question.
I think one thing that I've noticed, and what's really been the problem, is the new open meeting laws.
Exactly.
And so that's why there's been a delay in opening up the website, is because they can't guarantee that we can follow all the state law, and then we would be liable for any mistakes made.
Actually, the question that you just posed ought to be addressed to them, and find out how they are getting around the law. If they found a way to get around the law, we're, we're going to do the best we can with what we've got and stick to the law. We're pretty nervous about making sure we're in compliance.
They might have a town administrator that takes care of all that.
Dave or CJ, then there was somebody back there.
Well, I mean, would it be possible for, to bring these groups together, like the planning commission? I mean, I send my, I send my agenda out pretty much within the forty-eight hours. We're struggling a little bit with minutes. But to get these organizations together so we could all figure out what it is we have to do to go, you know, to help us understand what open meeting laws that we have to. to go, you know, to help us understand what open meeting laws that we have to abide by things, so we can assist, you know, getting this up and running. I think, you know, there should be some sort of educational process for the people, because we're all volunteers. So if there's some sort of educational process where the planning commission and the historical society and everybody who has to give money understands what they have to do and what the consequences of not doing. I agree with Lou. If you're not going to, you know, be part of the town process, then the town can't support you. So, I mean, to me, as serving on a planning commission, would be helpful to get these groups together so we all are on the same page with what we're required to do and in what timeframe and how to do it and all that kind of stuff.
What we'll have to do is get each committee, who's ever in charge or whatever, get them, come to a meeting, and tell them what they have to do, when they have to get it. And then we can, you know, if they can send it in, and then we can get it up on the website.
CJ, and then Elaine?
So my question is, is this a rule that applies to the town's select board? Or if someone were to have a website on his or her own or an organization, would they be bound by the same rules if they chose to occasionally put an agenda on or minutes? And the reason I'm asking that is because I think, I hope I'm not wrong, I think Ward's Borough is doing just that. And I think their website right now is being run by volunteers, and it's posting whatever they can get their hands on, but I don't know if they're bound by the same rules.
Elaine?
This is just a point of understanding. I'm just wondering, I can understand certainly the planning commission would need to be part of this, but shouldn't it be just the municipal boards? I mean, municipal committees that are functioning and, I mean, it's certainly not outside organizations.
No.
Who needs to post their minutes?
The Jamaica Old Home Day Committee, they receive...
They shouldn't be getting it, they should be in the outside organizations, remember? No, seriously, I mean, that's, I mean, the historical foundation gets its money from town meeting allocation. Okay? So, that's how they answer to the town. I don't see that they would need to vote their minutes. I mean, it's one thing for the recreation committee, which is a committee specifically of the town, the planning commission, but you guys have to do minutes and have to be careful about that anyway. Why can't you just load them on the site? I mean, you know, you're sending them out now, right? And the same with the library. I would really look to minimize the number of municipal committees as such. You know, and look at what you have to do to make that happen. And keep it slim and simple. I mean, just, I think you're making it more complicated than it needs to be. Just get the minutes online.
At all, finishing your website has been to put the planning commission and the select board.
Exactly, what work has to be done.
Terry?
I just wanted to say in Ward's Borough, because that's where I live, it is volunteers that do it. It's not a town-sanctioned website at all. And that's how they get away with it.
So that's what I'm saying, that is another option.
Like, the Facebook page is not town-sanctioned at all, but it has a lot of information on it, the Jamaica, Vermont, 05343 page.
Probably volunteers. Do you think we built a website by democracy here? We have a website ready to go. Talk to Lou. Okay.
I have that site for the food pantry, you don't have a link?
Do you put that link in there?
Thank you.
Karen?
Oh, hi.
Hi.
I'm wondering if someone from the select board can tell us a little bit about the pay-and-throw system and how that's working for the town this year? It hasn't quite been a year yet, but I should be...
The question was about the pay-and-throw system at the transfer station. Asking the select board to address how it's going so far.
That's me.
Your honor?
Actually, it's going very well. And if you read my little blurb in the report, you'll see that the cooperation has been really, really great. And we, the attendant and myself and others on the select board, we've had to figure some things out too, that we were agreeing on. But basically, people are buying their bags, they're using them, they're working very, very... People are working very hard to separate all of the recyclables and the garbage, actually, the trash, that goes into the compactor, as I wrote, actually goes about every third week. They come to pick it up before it was every week. Now, what's happened is that we have an overabundance of paper goods and plastics. So now, Wyndham Solid Waste is coming almost every week for the paper and about every two weeks, week and a half, for the plastics. And we really are not paying for that directly, but it's coming out of our dues for Wyndham Solid Waste. And Wyndham Solid Waste dues, actually, he's the president of the board, actually came down this year. So, we're fortunate in that. However, when the compactor goes, we pay $142.50 every time we pick it up. So you can see that we are beginning to really have a decrease in our costs. I did make a mistake in my math, which is probably not unusual, but we will go there, about, I think it comes to about a savings of $27,000 this year in our budgeted amount. So, it's going well. How about for you? How is it going for you? Do you have any questions?
Elaine?
Just one comment, we need a dollar bag.
You know, actually, we kind of thought about that. One of the things, though, I have found in our family is that when we buy the three-dollar bag, you can put an awful lot of stuff in that.
The problem happens is you have to buy a minimum amount.
Yes.
And last year, we bought so many bags at the minimum that we could buy, and they're still piled up in the town offices. They're going to last us another two years.
My husband and I have been out recycling for years. And we're having a really hard time filling bags. Yeah, we want to get our two dollars for it, you know? And we're having a really hard time filling those bags.
Any other discussion?
So thank you all. Thank you all for doing a good job.
That's an update, yes.
Can I ask the board who's in charge of the Shoreland Protection Act? Reinforcing the Shoreland Protection Act? Who's in charge of that? Do they work with the state? Who's in charge of that?
I think that's mostly around Lake Champlain.
I think. It's mostly around my pond, the gold pond, which is being decimated by my next-door neighbor. And I can't find out who's in charge of getting apartments for the use of the land.
Talk with the, we can get with A and R, get the specifics on that. The Agency of Natural Resources, they're the guys that I've been working with with the streams.
So speak with Paul one-on-one, and he'll be able to direct you.
And I'll get you in touch with those guys. They're the ones who have the answer. The shoreline law, most of what has been done in Vermont has got to do with leaching, you know, chemicals into the lakes, that kind of stuff. But if you've got a specific problem in that area, we can pull the A and R people in and discuss it.
Okay, good. Is there any other? We're one step off. Now, what I need is, is there any more business, other business to come before the body?
I think we need to thank our new moderator for doing a good job.
Voting Paul, if there were mistakes made, we'll go back and fix them. Alright, so is there any other business? Yes, Mary, and Dave?
I was interested in having the Old Town Days monies that we appropriate, being under voted appropriations. Somebody brought that up, but it's sort of washed under the table that they didn't get it in time. I would like to have it under voted appropriations. I don't know what we can do about that.
The select, speak to the select board directly about that.
Well, move it next year.
Good.
Very quickly, I work with a couple of groups in town that I wanted to let you all know exist. The Jamaica Planning Commission. If you're interested in projects around economic development, flood hazard regulations, some of the things we're working on, this coming year, we're going to start rewriting our town plan. So if you're interested in having a say in the plan that this municipal body uses to guide, come be part of our process at the planning commission. We meet the first and third Mondays, 7:00 p.m. at the town office. We're also reviving a group called the Jamaica Community Arts Council, in which we want to present and promote live arts in our community. Not just music, but theater, variety shows, talent shows, visual arts. If you're interested in supporting that effort, we're forming an organization right now to get that going. We meet every Thursday night at 7:00 at our house. So if you're interested in being part of that, please let me know. I'll put you on the email list. We have a Facebook page, Jamaica Community Arts. We're out there, we want to get it going, preserve and use this beautiful space we have right here. Last but not least, the town does, you folks have been generous enough to donate money to the Southeastern Vermont Water Shuttle Lines. What we do is monitor the quality of water, specifically in Pike's Falls Swimming Hole during the summer. If you want to help in that project, be a backup sampler, you can always use backup samplers. If you want to expand the sampling program into other parts of our water share here in Jamaica, let me know, and we'll see if we can make that happen. Thank you all.
And the other business, yes, Rod?
Everyone, remember, your dog license fees are due April 1st every year.
And what happens if they don't?
I come hump your dog down.
He's first constable, so he knows. Any other business? Remember the Doyle Poll is up here? You can hand it in to the clerk when you filled it out. Polls are open till 7:00. Let's go on to the next, the last.
Motion to adjourn.
No. To set the time for the opening of the next annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday in March 2017. I assume you wanted it 10:00. To transact other, any other business that may legally come before this body?
So move.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? You passed it. I will now entertain a motion. Thank you. Second?
Seconded.
All in agreement?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Subway!